Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorain County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.loraincounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the July 20, 2011 Lorain County Board of Commissioners Meeting. Commissioner Williams has the dog.
I love those ears. Wait till you see these ears.
Look at that dog with the big ears. All right, Jack, what do we have here?
Okay, what we have here is an Italian Greyhound mix. The reason why we gave it a mix is because usually they don't have brindle coloring. It's usually fawn, brown, or black. Now, these dogs are very companion, these are companion dogs and they were, they go back way back to Roman times and they were companions of the Roman emperors and things like that. And I tell you, this little guy here, I look at his teeth, he's only about a year old, but I tell you, he's a sweetheart, very shy, and then that's what they're known for, very, very lovable. And if anybody is looking for a dog, by all means come out to our kennel because I have forty-three in-house right now. So, this one will be available on Saturday at 3 o'clock.
These are pretty good dogs with kids as well.
Very much so, very much so.
And my in-laws have one of those, my dog Tom. Some was chasing one around yesterday, so, good dog here, cute face.
Today's gonna be the second sales tax hearing at 10 o'clock, 11:30 we're gonna have Common Police Budget Tim movie, so I need a resolution number one, John Townsley Services Bill.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion.
Aye.
Skousky?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
No investments, corporations?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kaila?
Aye.
Mr. Skousky?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kaila?
Aye.
Mr. Skousky?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
No advances, no payments, what positions?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kaila?
Aye.
Mr. Skousky?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Travel?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kaila?
Aye.
Mr. Skousky?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
No investments, corporations?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kaila?
Aye.
Mr. Skousky?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
No advances, no payments, what positions?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kaila?
Aye.
Mr. Skousky?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Travel?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kaila?
Aye.
Mr. Skousky?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kaila?
Aye.
Mr. Skousky?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners, authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summer sheet, from place within just Lorain County Commissioners.
Mr. Cordett?
Thank you, Commissioner Kaila. I do have a couple of potential new hires that will make us, I wanna talk to the board about, update you on labor negotiations with United Steelworkers America at E911, and also a potential pending litigation with orders and findings from the EPA. So, all those topics allowable for executive session discussions, and I would ask at the conclusion of our regular board meeting today, we go into executive session and have those talks. Thank you.
Adopt a FY 2012 Lorain County Tax Budget and approve a new tax budget.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kaila?
Aye.
Mr. Skousky?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under Community Development, award contract CT consultants for design, bid documents, and contract oversight inspections for CDVG funding sewer installation in Sheffield Township along Albany Avenue in the amount of $28,000 per hundred feet hours to pay from sewer facility improvement.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion.
I just have a question. Is there any assessments involved with this project? It's all paid for by CDVG money? Great, thank you.
Mr. Skousky?
Aye.
Aye?
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under job and family, authorize payment of county general fund mandated share to job and families in compliance with the Highway Code 5101-2161 for the period July 1st, 2011 through June 30, 2012, in the amount of $91,006, minimum of 5% of the state of Ohio certified amount of county share of $1,146,618 for state fiscal year 12 to general fund public assistance currently in.
So moved.
Second?
Yeah, just a comment. This is about an $8,000 increase versus last year for our county participation.
Even a bigger piece of discussion, this is one of those mandated costs that we have no control over, that we're required to pay. You know, since we're doing our budget hearings and you're looking at different initiatives, I think it's important to point out that they send the bill and they say pay it and you don't have a choice, or they cut off your funds that are passed through the state from the federal government for various programs.
Similar to providing funding for the new PSI guys that we were assured we were gonna get state funding for?
Well, I think they got funding for the gentlemen, I don't believe they have funding for any place for them to work.
What about health benefits and things like that?
I haven't finished tracking it up, but Mr. Luby will be here today, so we can have that discussion with.
Oh, good. I know we had an $8,000 increase from last year, but it is a decrease from when Ted and I first began as Commissioners, it was like 1.5 million, so it's a decrease over a long period of time to about $300,000, $400,000.
Because the agency's been contracting.
Right. And I was wondering how that formula, like, why it's going down, because they're getting less funding overall, so our portion is smaller?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Kaila?
Aye.
Mr. Skousky?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Did you say may?
He said aye.
Oh, aye. Clerk Courts, approve an enter into First Amendment to lease agreement with South Shore Community Development Corporation to lease 1,272.25 square feet at St. Joseph's Community Center to be used by Lorain County Clerk Courts Office as a satellite office for automobile titles, passports, and the lease is extended until March 31, 2014, at an annual rate of $15,267 based on $12 per square foot with a 90-day cancellation clause.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion.
Is this the same price that we had before?
No, it's not the original price. It went back to '07 was the original contract basis. It was a little bit less than this.
It was less?
It was a little bit less. It was '07 and I think there's accelerators based on utilities and everything.
Okay.
$12 per square foot for retail built on space in a crumbling building, it seems awfully high, but...
We get that money back mostly from, well, we have been over the last year or two from titles.
But you've had a 50% reduction since it's gone in to that building.
50% reduction, which...
As far as revenue, when they moved, moved into St. Joe's, so...
From downtown on Broadway?
Correct, right. Yeah, nobody realizes it's really there, and the hours of operation of it too. I just, you can pass it, but I'm gonna be a no vote.
Noted.
Mr. Kaila?
Aye.
Mr. Skousky?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
No.
Do we have anywhere else where, would be available for him, do you want to look somewhere else?
Well, I think our concern though, going back to a couple years ago, the negotiations saving the St. Joe's building, we were on the hook for three-quarter of a million dollars, that this was one of our guarantees, that we would keep a county office there.
True.
So, I mean, no, I agree with Commissioner Williams in the past when it was on Broadway, but Broadway's gone through an entire downturn.
Yeah, there's not a lot of...
I can tell you that from personal experience, there's not as much traffic.
A lot of traffic anywhere on Broadway.
And there's not as many car dealers down there as there once was, but you do have a high concentration of residents that use the office, who may not be purchasing cars as often as those in some other more desirable locations, be it North Ridgeville, or Amherst, or Wellington.
Yeah, we want to keep a presence in St. Joe's as long as St. Joe's is open.
Right, especially in regards that we really can't afford to purchase the space that the veterans were asking for.
Under the Engineers, approve modification number one with Bromhill Engineering AVON for construction maintenance services on the Station Road Project in Colombee Township. The completion date was extended due to weather and increase of $53,200 plus racing total contract amount to $202,430 approved by ODA.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kaila?
Aye.
Mr. Skousky?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under the Sheriff, authorize Lorain County Sheriff to buy for grant monies through fiscal year 11 Brian Memorial Justice Assistant Grant to purchase modems to replace current ones in 23 patrol vehicles that will be discontinued within two years in various calibers of ammunition. This request is based upon mutual agreement with the cities of Illyria and Lorain, Ohio Attorney General certified a disparate allocation claim, and neither city nor county will receive any money until an agreement was approved. Therefore, the allocation of funds will be split as follows. Illyria $22,985, Lorain $22,986, and Lorain County $22,985.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kaila?
Aye.
Mr. Skousky?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under the Sheriff, authorize Lorain County Sheriff to buy for grant monies through fiscal year 11 Brian Memorial Justice Assistant Grant to purchase modems to replace current ones in 23 patrol vehicles that will be discontinued within two years in various calibers of ammunition. This request is based upon mutual agreement with the cities of Illyria and Lorain, Ohio Attorney General certified a disparate allocation claim, and neither city nor county will receive any money until an agreement was approved. Therefore, the allocation of funds will be split as follows. Illyria $22,985, Lorain $22,986, and Lorain County $22,985.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kaila?
Aye.
Mr. Skousky?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under the Sheriff, authorize Lorain County Sheriff to buy for grant monies through fiscal year 11 Brian Memorial Justice Assistant Grant to purchase modems to replace current ones in 23 patrol vehicles that will be discontinued within two years in various calibers of ammunition. This request is based upon mutual agreement with the cities of Illyria and Lorain, Ohio Attorney General certified a disparate allocation claim, and neither city nor county will receive any money until an agreement was approved. Therefore, the allocation of funds will be split as follows. Illyria $22,985, Lorain $22,986, and Lorain County $22,985.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kaila?
Aye.
Mr. Skousky?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under the Sheriff, authorize Lorain County Sheriff to buy for grant monies through fiscal year 11 Brian Memorial Justice Assistant Grant to purchase modems to replace current ones in 23 patrol vehicles that will be discontinued within two years in various calibers of ammunition. This request is based upon mutual agreement with the cities of Illyria and Lorain, Ohio Attorney General certified a disparate allocation claim, and neither city nor county will receive any money until an agreement was approved. Therefore, the allocation of funds will be split as follows. Illyria $22,985, Lorain $22,986, and Lorain County $22,985.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kaila?
Aye.
Mr. Skousky?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under the Sheriff, authorize Lorain County Sheriff to buy for grant monies through fiscal year 11 Brian Memorial Justice Assistant Grant to purchase modems to replace current ones in 23 patrol vehicles that will be discontinued within two years in various calibers of ammunition. This request is based upon mutual agreement with the cities of Illyria and Lorain, Ohio Attorney General certified a disparate allocation claim, and neither city nor county will receive any money until an agreement was approved. Therefore, the allocation of funds will be split as follows. Illyria $22,985, Lorain $22,986, and Lorain County $22,985.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kaila?
Aye.
Mr. Skousky?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Cordess County Minister?
Is it next week that we're out at the Glide? Are you gonna talk a little bit about that during, so people know where we'll be next Wednesday?
I will mention it under my report.
Yeah, well, I just wanna let everybody know, we want to mention that, and then we'll invite everybody out to that. So, other than that, I don't have any additional comments. Thank you.
Mr. Ennis Assistant County Prosecutor?
I had no report this morning.
Mr. Shkow, I have no report.
Oh. No imminent or pending litigation?
Jim has already indicated he's gonna talk about that one, so...
You're blushing, Jim. Did he say something embarrassing to you?
No.
No.
Okay.
It was a busy week. Had the opportunity Wednesday after our meeting here, I got a phone call from Lorain Lions Club that meets, and I know there's a few of them, they meet at noon at Revan's Golling Alley, this is called Common Green. Dave Burgess is the president of the organization this year, and they asked me to speak about the sales tax. I was supposed to take about twenty minutes, ended up being about forty-five minutes with all the questions and answering. It was a real good cross-section of the public, and I'll bring up some discussion during our sales tax, during our response as I receive them. Congratulations to our staff, Pat Meister, Don Romancic, our partners with Lorain County Growth Partnership, Rural King, coming into the old Value City Building on Overland Road here in Illyria slash Carlisle. I'm not sure what the jurisdiction is right there. Commissioner Blair can help us. Okay, nice to see you, Commissioner, welcome today. That was a real good team effort by everybody to put that deal together, fifty approximate jobs, so we're proud of that. Also, I had an opportunity on Friday night, got an email, Judge Moraldi, one of our common police judges, was holding a concert at Lakeview Park, and it was probably five or six hundred people who showed up there. He had about a dozen friends coming down and singing, did a real nice job, but the response from people who'd been reading about the sales tax also were discussion points. I got asked a lot of questions, and they were pertinent to conversation while we're here, looking at three different options, so I am hoping that we can carry that through. And then this Saturday, Lorain's International Relay for Life, it's the Black River Landing. It starts at 2 o'clock with the Survivor Walk, and then the Survivor Dinner will be going till 9 o'clock Sunday morning, so please stop down. It's a great cause. We'd love to see you. Thank you.
Are you dressing up like a girl?
My son is this year.
Oh.
My son is this year. I lost so much weight, I can't find a dress that fits me.
It should be easier to find a dress.
Anytime.
So many places I could go with that.
It's for a good cause, Commissioner, a very good cause.
Well, we had a, had an open house here yesterday. We had four people that showed up on the tax hearing, and they're talking to different people as well, out in the public, and Thursday's the Township Association meeting, and they're gonna be talking about the budget, gonna be attending that, hope one or both of you can attend as well, and I'm gonna start going around talking at the different Township meetings, so Monday and Tuesdays, if your evenings are free, and, oh, one last thing, Lorain youth baseball coach Chuck Strauser is retiring after thirty years of coaching and that, and just wanted to give congratulations to him. He was actually my coach when I was five years old, so, did a great job out there, one of the, one of the good people, good person, good Christian, and a good coach, who served his community and did everything he could for the kids out there, and sad that he's retiring, but congratulations, and he was able to coach his kids and his grandkids, so...
Wow, beautiful.
Yeah.
Next week, Tuesday, we're gonna have our regular board meeting here at 11:00 AM. We're going to have the IAC meeting, 11:30 the Clerk Courts, Ron Nabikowski will go over his budget, and 1 o'clock Judge Walther for the probate budget will go over. Wednesday, July 27, at 9:30, we will be at the Entrepreneurship Innovation Center at the college. I didn't bring my thing, but I think it's room 132.
132, good.
132, and that's at 9:30, and then there'll be a presentation by Dr. Church with regards to Glide Tenders, I can now make it from 10 to 11, and then after that, it's 11:00. Everybody's welcome. August 3 at 9:30, we'll have a board meeting here, 10 o'clock prosecutor will go over his budget, 12 o'clock the coroner's budget, August 10 at 9:30, board meeting here, 10 o'clock sheriff's budget, August 17, 9:30, board meeting here, 10 o'clock treasurer's budget, 11 o'clock auditor's budget, 12 o'clock board of elec, elections budget, and 1 o'clock recorder's budget. Word correspondence?
Will the reading be waived?
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kaila?
Aye.
Mr. Skousky?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
It's quarter till at this point, our public hearing is scheduled for 10 o'clock. Do we want to take a break, go to executive? Jim, do you need much more than fifteen minutes to cover the issues we have, or...
I haven't even printed out the orders of findings yet, I told you that all the time, but I, we can take a break, I'll see if I can get a hold of it. Sandy, can you print those out for me?
Can we go over the other things?
The orders of findings from the EPA?
And go over the personnel sheet.
Or do I have a copy in my folder? I got it here, I'll dig to it.
I'll make a motion, go on executive session, we reconvene at 10 o'clock for the sales tax hearing.
Second?
Mr. Kaila?
Aye.
Mr. Skousky?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Thank you very much. The board has reconvened from executive session.
It makes...
My eye is strobing.
Strobing?
Oh, almost like an acid trip.
Oh, no.
Went from medical marijuana to acid.
Here we go.
We're having fun. The board has reconvened from executive session. I'd like to open the public hearings in regards to the sales tax proposals that the board has on our agenda. Madam Clerk, can you start by reading the three options?
Notice were published in the Chronicle and Morning Journal on June 29 and July 6. The first sales tax hearing was on July 13 at 10:00 AM. Information meeting was held at 5:00 PM. Today is the last public hearing to consider one of the following adoptions. One, for the purpose of supporting criminal administrative justice services in Lorain County for a five-year period, an increase of existing tax levy pursuant to Highway Revise Code 5739.021 by the rate of one-quarter, 1%, increasing the existing tax levy pursuant to Revised Code 5741.02 by the rate of one-quarter, 1%. Two, for the purpose of supporting criminal administrative justice services in Lorain County for a three-year period, an increase in existing tax levy pursuant to Highway Revise Code 5739.021 by the rate of one-quarter, 1%, and increasing the existing tax levy pursuant to Revised Code 5741.021 by the rate of one-quarter, 1%. Three, for the purpose of supporting criminal administrative justice services in Lorain County for a three-year period, an increase in existing tax levy pursuant to Highway Revise Code 5739.021 by the rate of one-quarter, 1%. Three, for the purpose of supporting criminal administrative justice services in Lorain County for a three-year period, an increase in existing tax levy pursuant to Highway Revise Code 5739.021 by the rate of one-half of 1%, and increasing the existing tax levy pursuant to Revised Code 5741.021 by the rate of one-half of 1%. And one of these will be on the November ballot and will be effective April 1, 2012.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'd like to open the meeting by welcoming everybody again. The reason we're here today and why we're having these meetings is Lorain County is looking at approximately a $6.25 million shortfall going into the 2012 fiscal year. We have sustained major cuts from the state of Ohio, more unfunded mandates, as we brought up earlier, especially in regards to the new pre-sentencing investigators. They have covered the employees, but have not given us any dollars towards giving them a place to be housed. The state has saved their dollars by eliminating their lease and eliminating thirteen or fourteen employees and giving us funding for six employees, but didn't give same money to house them. So, the state is basically fixing their issues on our backs, so, just another example of why Lorain County is in the position it's in. Lorain County hasn't had a sales tax increase other than the one that was imposed two years ago by this board, Lieutenant Commissioner Williams, since 1985. In 1995, there was a quarter percent that was dedicated to the county jail. It approximately raises $7 million to $7.5 million a year. Our county jail costs us $11 to $12 million a year to operate, so that money is coming out of the sales tax that we collect in our half a percent. Again, not to bore some people who were here before, Lorain County's sales tax is at 6.25%. We are tied for either 83rd or 87th in the state in the amount of sales tax we charge. One county is less than us, and our current revenues don't meet the needs of the government we need to provide. So, I will open it up to my fellow Commissioners for comments, and then we'll open it up to the public.
I'm calling the public, seeing we have so many faces in the audience, so I hope we get some good advice and good questions.
Yeah, just, one of the things that I think people get confused about that I've been hearing is this is gonna go for a vote. I just want to remind people that. We're going to pick probably just one option to go on in the November ballot, and then the voters are gonna decide if they want to give the increase or not, so, I'd say we open it up to the public and have dialogue that way.
Anyone wishing to address the board, please come up and join us at the microphone. We would like to have your name, but as Mr. Nimitz stated, you don't have to do that. But we'd like to know where you're from, so we know who we're dialoguing with and the issues you have. In our sales tax proposals, you'll see they all go towards supporting criminal and administrative justice services that we provide, which is about 70% of county government. Anyone wishing to join us? Ah, Commissioner Blair, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. While you were out, I left a copy of my remarks at your place. Thank you for allowing public comment on the adoption of an increase in Lorain County's sales tax. As you know, for twenty years I sat on your side of the fence, therefore I am most respectful of the positions you find yourself in with respect to the operations of Lorain County's general government. Since leaving public office, I have become more acutely aware of the missed opportunities that Lorain County faces due to a significant lack of matching monies to enhance the operations of Lorain County Transit. What follows that, of course, is a lack of matching funds for my favorite longtime project, the West Shore Corridor Transportation Project. You will recall that Congresswoman Betty Sutton garnered a $363,000 earmark in 2008 for the Commissioners, but it took us until 2010 to put together the necessary match monies. This project, as reported to you at your June 1 board meeting, is moving along nicely, but much more needs to be done in order to receive federal transit administration monies. This project, as a beginning, has identified a need for express buses to neighboring counties. Jobs are available at Kalahari and Erie County, and as Commissioner Williams has pointed out, with the advent of the casinos in Cuyahoga, jobs and gaming opportunities will also be available there. Matching funds could be used to continue the study of the West Shore Project, where more detailed ridership and capital cost estimates will be developed. Monies could be used to help match Tiger Three grant funds for capital improvement transit project, projects, excuse me, which can be applied for beginning in October. Nobody likes increased taxation, but I believe you would be making a positive investment in Lorraine County's future. While Lorraine County may not be comparable with Nassau and Suffolk Counties in New York State, their sales tax rate is eight point six two five percent respectively, with four percent going to New York State. Although funding is not designated for transit, the idea is that if enough funds are generated by the new tax, some might be made available to fund near-term projects, such as new express buses to Erie and Cuyahoga Counties and partial restoration of Lorraine County Transit fixed routes and dial-a-ride services. Thank you for your time and attention, and it is nice to be on this side of the table.
Thank you, Commissioners. Always a pleasure to see you.
I'm here to discuss, Randy Newman, Lorraine, Ohio. I'm here to discuss Option Four, which isn't on here, which is no sales tax. I look at the, I've looked to study these the last week here, and I look at the five-year proposal and the quarter percent, and I see a three-million-dollar shortfall in five years. What are we gonna do now to get the carryover to take care of that?
Well, my discussion points, and I actually spoke about this area when I spoke to Lorraine Lyons, and I can go into some dialogue on that. And meeting with the county auditor, Craig Leffler, I was hoping he'd stick around for some dialogue. There might be additional shortfalls earned in that, Mr. Newman. We are looking at a reappraisal of property taxes. As you're well aware, throughout the state, the county, the country, property taxes have fallen because our values have dropped. We're probably looking at a five or six percent drop in next year's reevaluation for the two thousand and thirteen budget year. A five or six percent drop when you take our overall inside mileage with the first two point one or two point two million going to debt service, when we talk about the one option of lowering the property tax. There's about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar shortfall in debt service and up to four or five hundred thousand dollar drop in our general fund revenues. And as we move forward on that, addressing your question as to not, but trying to deliver this properly, so it's understood that at the end of that five-year period, we're looking at that three and a half million dollar roughly shortfall, three point six million?
Three point three.
Okay. I believe through the quarter percent, and my discussions in talking to the Lorraine Lyons here, which is a broad mix, bipartisan, business people, community activists, community involvement, that talking about a quarter percent five-year, that I believe we'll be able to attrition some of those costs over a five-year period. And it's less confusing as one of our three options, especially in regard, City of Lorraine was one of the few communities that passed our sales tax two years ago. Because the City of Lorraine understands the need of county services, because we operate the jail, the justice system, fifty percent of the population gets divorced and uses the courts. That with, the Lorraine City School is also doing a property tax and an income tax. If we were to do a property tax, sales tax, it may be confusing trying to explain to the public, differentiating, which we had an issue with two years ago. Aliri was doing their yes on Issue Ten for their police department, and we had our Issue Four, which was the sales tax for criminal justice. I think the five-year...
Okay, just on that, on that point, you put this on the November ballot, and you're gonna have people walking in there looking at the healthcare amendment, they're looking at SB Five, they're gonna walk out eyes lazed over.
Not arguing that point.
Yeah. And, you know, the magic word is no, 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 no.
Well, hopefully through...
We could throw a switch and said no, it'd be easier, wouldn't it?
Well, I hope not.
What I'm looking at is, I'm looking, like you said, three point three million after the five-year term, and that's even including that you're getting the five, the quarter percent for five years. So what are you gonna do now to create enough carryover to take care of this?
Well, again, if that's what I was going at, to get that three and a half million dollar shortfall through attrition, and in a five-year period, the economy should peak back up. As we talked last week, Commissioner Kocowski speaks about is our investment income. The economy should start turning to where we have some increased investment income.
Well, I mean, we've increased, we've increased the employee base here since two thousand, about four hundred employees.
Who has?
There's eighteen hundred employees in the county now.
We didn't increase.
We didn't increase.
Well, let me speak to that for a second, if I may. You need to, you need to put this in the perspective of what we're dealing with here. We're dealing with the general fund here. And I can assure you that the employee base in the general fund has not increased.
It dropped over two hundred employees, based on the auditor's numbers at the end of last year.
As compared to his point of the high point, I understand that.
When Commissioner Kocowski and I came into offices, approximately seven hundred and thirty employees. It was now about five hundred and fifteen. So, I mean, those are numbers that the auditor submitted to us. Because we don't do hiring for other departments, Mr. Newman, so I don't know their in and outs.
Well, I mean, it's still eighteen hundred government employees.
But again, I don't want you to misrepresent that, somebody to hear this or read this. The, we're not, the taxpayers have approved levies for children's services, for MRDD, for mental health, and those people do hire employees. They do expand and contract with their revenues. You cannot put that in the perspective of what we're doing here, because that's a completely different thing. And that is part of...
It's all, it's all, it's all money that leaves Lorraine County and comes back in one way, shape, and form.
But it's a misrepresentation of what we're trying to accomplish here, and that's what confuses the taxpayers.
But what you're wanting is you're wanting money out of my pocket, and you're not gonna get it.
I'm not wanting anything out of your pocket. What I'm indicating to you is that I think that we need to give it a proper perspective. I respect the fact that you disagree with any sales tax increase, but, you know, you can start talking about all kinds of things that have no relevancy to that issue and confuse people. And that's not really a good thing to do, Mr. Newman.
Right, here we're talking about our general fund, Mr. Newman.
We're talking about ten percent of the whole budget of the county, I understand that. But what I'm looking at is when you continue to go back to the well, and you said it yourself, in nineteen ninety-two, you got an increase only for the financing of the jail. What I'm asking for right now is you got nine hundred and eight thousand dollars carryover in two thousand and fourteen here, but you still got a shortfall of almost four million dollars on the other two years, and you're still getting the quarter percent tax revenue, if you get it. I mean, even, you know, this is a pick-your-poison day. And that's, you know, we don't want either one of the poisons. I mean, if I had my choice, I would, if I had my choice, I would get the half percent.
That's your statement. When it goes to the ballot, that's what we will hear, yes or no on the type of county services that people want provided, whether it's the townships and police services, the jail services, the court services.
What you haven't shown to me is the good faith to make the cuts now to prepare for the future. And all you do, you wanna come back, and I know in two thousand and fourteen, if we go to three here, we're gonna have a renewal, not an increase. You know, sorry. You're not showing the good faith here that I expect, and all that will be is to get us enough carryover to get rid of this three point three million dollars in two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and eighteen.
I think we've said all along, even with the sales tax increase, we've also talked that we are gonna continue to do as many cuts as possible without crippling county government.
You gotta look at the reality of it, that you're gonna be six million dollars short in two thousand and twelve. You gotta look at that reality.
Well, yeah, for sure, we are. Yeah, that's no doubt.
And I was planning for the future. I mean, you know, five years down from the road, we're expecting lottery revenue. Who knows what that'll be, if it'll come, what that changes. And even, you know, even with the half percent, do I know we're gonna get the sales, the taxing decreased on the property tax? No, we don't. We don't know that for sure.
Mr. Newman, that's why I think, in my personal opinion, is the quarter percent five-year temporary. It's a fixed number. There's no confusion on what it is.
Yeah, but it's not a temporary. It's gonna be, it's gonna be a renewal. It's not gonna be temporary.
Well, the voters would have the opportunity to, if we did do a renewal, to say yes or no at that point, if we've been good stewards of the money for five years while they give us...
Well, I would rather see it expire in two thousand and fourteen and then have to be put on the ballot after it's expired.
It would.
No, it wouldn't expire. It would be a renewal.
It would go on.
But what I'm saying is, I don't wanna see a renewal. I wanna see an expiry and a new tax. But, I mean, like you said, you can't handcuff the future boards.
Okay, so, okay, if we did exactly what you said and just didn't even have an option, had Option Four with no tax increase, where do you, have you looked at our budget? Do you know where we should cut that six million dollars?
It's not my job. We elected you for it. Six million dollars, you gotta find.
And we're telling you, as you're elected officials, that we need six million dollars. We need this tax increase.
Well, we're telling you as citizens of Lorraine County, you're not gonna get it.
Okay, I understand what you're saying. Do you think I would sit up here knowing that I have to run for reelection in another year, and I already know I have an opponent, that I'm gonna say we need a sales tax? I would rather be able to say, hey, I found a way to find six million dollars. It's just not possible.
Why don't you put the sales tax on the two thousand and twelve ballot, would you?
We may have to. We may have to impose.
It's in pass in November. May have to do it in twelve.
The city, the school board is in Lorraine.
I care more about Lorraine County and its future than I do about my own by putting this, asking for another sales tax.
Well, you know, just, all I'm asking is you go ahead and make six million dollars and cut it, because chances are you ain't gonna get this sales tax.
Show me where to do it, and I'll do it tomorrow, without crippling county government.
I ain't bothered to look at it. I thought it was your job, and I'd be glad to.
Thank you.
Mr. Newman, if I can respond, though, give me a second, David. And I'm not gonna argue with your points. Everybody has an opinion. But I'm saying what the county governments have to do is we're going through the budget hearings, and if you'd like to stay for those, we do the budget hearings right after. That Lorraine County is going to be faced with doing two budgets for two thousand and twelve. We're going to have to do a budget with the sales tax passing, and we're gonna have to do a budget without one. And that's our responsibility. As you said, we're elected to make those decisions, but we're gonna do it through the proper process of meeting with all of our department heads, the elected officials, their budgetary people, on how we do that going forward, so we have some type of game plan.
Well, it's nice to hear the government's gonna do proper process.
Let me finish, and I'll let you respond. But we will do that going forward. It's going to take us four or five weeks through every department as we're doing them, and the courts are the largest. That's why we did ninety-five pages last week with Mr. Messer in the domestic relations. We're doing it today with common pleas, and we'll be doing it through August. But I believe we'll all sit down at the end, which we've decided, and they've all agreed, we'll get together and decide where those cuts will come from and what's going to be eliminated, so the public will know, going into the November election, whatever option we decide to put on the ballot, if any, what the consequences are. And that's our job.
I'd like to see that. I'd really like to see that transparency in this county commission. Appreciate your time.
Hey, Randy, or Mr. Newman, you know, I've gone through and I try to make cuts up here. You agree with that, right?
Yeah.
And with that, we can make additional cuts. Six point two five million dollars is gonna be tough, and...
I'm not gonna argue that. Out of forty-six million dollars, I'm not gonna argue that.
It comes down to, really, what type of government do you wanna see? I mean, yeah, as far as the buses and that, yeah, that doesn't bring economic development. I'm not gonna go that route. I wanna have on services that's going to be beneficial for all the residents of the county and things that's gonna bring economic development here. We can go through and we can make the additional cuts. But to get the entire six point two five is gonna be tough to do. I mean, obviously, I'm not gonna sit here and say we can't do it, because if it fails, we're going to do it. But just kinda think of it, what do you want? Do you, you know, we're trying to work with the Sheriff's Department to get more deputies on road patrol. I think that's a good thing. Do you agree with that?
Oh, I agree one hundred percent.
Oh, okay. And there are other services that we need to try to improve on and give to the, to the county, the residents of the county. Can't do it, though, if you don't have the cash flow. You can't go through and do economic development without a cash flow. And, you know, I'm looking at the half percent with the property tax. You kinda give and take there, but to Mr. Kalos' point, that's gonna be confusing on it. I look at the quarter percent, three years, kinda show the people, hey, we're going through, we're making the cuts and doing what we need to as county officials. So, and that's gonna be the choice that we're gonna make here next week. So I hope that you don't just go around telling people, no option. You know, tell the people what we're doing here and let them make a decision. But I understand economic times are tough.
We didn't, we didn't want the emergency sales tax when we got that. It went down in flames.
I've stood here, and I told you, I'm not gonna vote for it, so you're not gonna get that. And that's why it's going up for a vote in November. But the thing it comes down to is you gotta believe in who you elect and trust that they're making the right decisions on it. But it's good that you come up here and you challenge us as well, so I appreciate your comments.
Well, that's what I, trust me, when it says tax, I'm gonna be up here. I can assure you of that.
Thanks, Mr. Newman. David?
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
David Ashenhurst Oberlin. I haven't been here in a while. I've been in Chicago. I've been in New York. Places where they pay a lot.
What are you paying there? Yeah, what are you paying there?
Yeah, well, eight and a half, nine, I don't know. It's bigger than my tips half the time. I am, I mean, in Lorraine, the last sales tax proposal passed by fifty votes. In Oberlin, it passed by fifty-eight percent. So in Oberlin, we understand sales taxes and what they provide. I don't think any of this, just putting out numbers, is all that's needed. I've said before that I really regret the passing of the People's Annual Financial Report in Lorraine County. I thought some of it was, we used to have something besides the two-hundred-page audit or something that would come out every year, that would just tell us, you know, pie charts and graphs about where our money came from, where it went. I hope, and I think it is, it's funny, it was funny in Oberlin, as an elected official there, that we're trying to talk about, you know, the guts of city government, and yet we can't, it becomes a political thing to try and get an issue passed. It's very frustrating. But I hope, I hope you do Option One, because I don't want this to come up every three years. It just, it's gonna be just an aggravating discussion. But I hope, in talking about this, we have some real data. How much of this is gonna be paid by Lorraine County people, and how much is gonna be paid by people going back and forth to casinos and Kalahari and stuff like that? This is a tax that's paid by everybody in Lorraine County, whether they live here or not. That's a good thing. We, you know, and I'd also like to know, how much does Lorraine County, do Lorraine County people go over and spend in Cuyahoga County, where, you know, they're paying the higher tax to shop at Crocker Park or something?
There's no quantitative breakdown by numbers. They don't give us those type of numbers in our breakdowns for our Budget Director and Auditor. But there is forty percent of the population of Lorraine County works in Cuyahoga. Okay, so, I mean, that's a number, so how many of those people are eating lunch there?
Right.
In restaurants or doing any shopping there? I mean, that would be a number that would be hard to substantiate. I'm sure there's something out there that would give an...
And, yeah, I was gonna, there's, there used to be in census data and in economic development data, people knew where people were shopping. And I don't see any of that anymore, and I hope we...
I think because of the spread, David, with the highways and all the build on those highways, it's such a moving target to try and figure out what those numbers might be. They're difficult, because I haven't seen those since I've been in here, six and a half years. They give a breakdown. I get a population movement, or we get a population movement, and then we get a jobs movement that, actually, Tim Neal's got a great report on that that shows where the jobs go to and, you know, people moving around because jobs have changed in all the communities. So has, you know, the amount of people who are leaving Lorraine County, going to Cuyahoga County or Medina County or Erie County to work every day. There are those percentage of numbers, but their shopping and spending habits aren't in a quantitative, you know, a number to work with. I know what you're saying. I mean, always in the past...
Somebody knows it. I mean, the Crocker Park management people know it.
They probably have something like that, because they know how much they're going to attract across. And in the past, they've always said, well, you keep your sales tax low, you get more sales. Well, Lorraine County's sales tax has been stagnant at best.
Yeah, well...
And so there hasn't been a big movement, because we're six and a quarter. Cuyahoga went to seven and three-quarter percent. We didn't see a big uptick in our sales tax numbers, that everybody from Cuyahoga County was coming here to shop.
Right.
So, I still think the bulk of it is people living here, working here locally.
How's the Lorraine County Visitors Bureau doing these days? I mean, are we, are people, you know, is our bed tax revenue up, or are people...
Bed tax revenues are holding fairly steady, but let's, let's go back to the old boring talk of donor and recipient counties with regard to discretionary spending and sales tax. It's a pretty boring subject. I wish they were still doing that report, but the last one that was out there indicated that we were a donor county and that we were only keeping about eighty-six percent of the potential funds in our community, turning in our community. And that fourteen percent of that was leaving Lorraine County for other areas. And usually, you'll see that when you're sandwiched in between two destinations. And Lorraine County is suffering from that, because Erie County has become a destination, a huge destination, and Cuyahoga County has all the sports arenas where people go there. So we're not getting people to keep their discretionary spending here, nor are we getting replacement from other folks coming here as Lorraine County as a destination. That's part of the problem. So I can't tell you people aren't coming here to shop, but usually, major purchases is a, the tax usually follows where you live. So nobody's coming here to buy a car, to save a few percent, because it doesn't matter.
That's home rule.
Right, that's what you said. It doesn't matter. It's not going to save them any money as soon as they produce their residency information, they're taxed as to where their residency is. The, the, so while we're, until we become either a destination county or at least a break-even county with regards to expenditures, we're always gonna have a difficult time. Couple that with a significantly lower tax base than other communities have, i.e. with the sales tax, you can see that there's only gonna be continued stress going into the future with that.
Well, as I say, just when we talk about what people are paying here already to live here and how much is being, I mean, you know, how many people are stopping at the new rest areas on the turnpike? Those people are paying Lorraine County sales tax.
The, also, yeah, another thing you have to... Another thing you have to recognize is that forty percent of our residents leave Lorraine County to work. So, you know, that's an issue. We do have some numbers, how many come across. We do have some migrating workers coming into the community ourselves, but not as many coming into our community that are leaving our community to work. Again, because we're adjacent to a major metropolitan area that produces, under the core city concept, produces a lot more jobs closer into the inner-city ring. So those are all stresses that get placed upon revenues that are generated for operational government services. But along with being sandwiched in between both of those destinations, we also encounter significant urban problems, being next to a major metropolitan area such as Cuyahoga. And, you know, obviously, we've had some city problems ourselves in some of our older cities. You know, we have to come into balance with that. And there's not as many people stopping on the turnpike paying sales taxes as you may think. It'd be better if they got off the turnpike and hung around in Lorraine County a little while.
Well, and Oberlin is a destination within Lorraine County and does, you know, we do have more people coming in than going out all the time. So maybe that's why we're for it down there. But I just hope that, in the course of things, we can have really clear understanding of how this works. And so far, I don't, I haven't seen it, but as I say, I've been out of town.
Well, David, you hear when we get a breakdown of the revenues and the shortfalls?
No.
Okay, well, you missed some stuff. At least the paperwork that we had out, that would show you that it's a breakdown year by year, and what we're looking at all the way through twenty sixteen, which is the five-year proposal, the three-year proposal.
Oh, no, I see this.
Okay.
But it doesn't really have...
We had other things that we talked about up here.
Okay.
I think Neil put some of it together that we had on a spreadsheet that showed each and every year what we've lost. And, I mean, just the local government funding alone, you know, as City of Oberlin, well, you're no longer an elected official, but as a resident there, you know how important the local government fund was.
Yeah.
So they balance their budgets on our backs.
I do understand that. I guess what I'm hoping is that by the time the county fair comes, there are some charts.
I'm like you. I like graphics. I like pie charts. I like graphs. And actually, yesterday, I asked Lisa if we could do some kind of pie chart. I spoke with Raj yesterday for about an hour or so, and his idea was, you know, have a pie chart for your property taxes, because a lot of people don't, some people, not a lot, don't realize the difference between their property taxes and sales tax and income tax and where all that money goes.
Right.
And, you know, you get that little pie chart on your property taxes, and it shows the little sliver that comes to Lorraine County, and the rest of their property taxes, you know, goes to the schools and MRDD and all the other levies that they've voted in over the years. So, yeah, I'm like you. I'd like to see some graphs and pie charts and things like that to show what that little sliver, all the different departments that that covers, you know, and then how the sales tax supplements that and how our sales tax supplements the jail that is on that pie chart, too, that doesn't provide enough revenue to cover the jail expenses. So, I mean, it's, it's very confusing to a lot of people. Like, I pay two thousand dollars, you know, a year in my property taxes, and, you know, what am I getting for that? So they don't, people don't understand. And then another tax, but this tax is, you know, if you don't spend money, you don't pay taxes. You know, anything that's discretionary. It's a different kind of tax.
It is.
It's a fair tax, I believe. I wish it was all sales tax and there weren't any other kind of taxes.
Well, that, we get into arguments about how regressive it is and things like that. But I guess... Excuse me?
It goes back to, you don't, if you don't spend it, you don't get taxed.
Right.
I mean, if you wanna talk about unfair taxes, we could go on all day about that.
Yeah.
If you don't breathe, you don't put carbon dioxide in the air.
What's that?
I'm, I'm not sure how you say, if you don't spend at all.
If you don't have discretionary spending, then you don't pay any taxes if you, if it's all sales tax, is what he said, I believe.
If you're not buying taxable goods, right?
Right. But aren't taxable goods just about everything except food?
No. I mean, your utilities, your rent, your medical, your prescriptions, all the necessities in life are not taxes. It's-
Well, utilities are taxed, they're just not sales taxed.
Correct. Not county sent-
They don't come to, they don't come to us.
Right. No, I understand. As I say, I just hope this gets a little clearer in the course of things, and I'm for it. And I like option one.
Thank you. We'll try to get some graphs for you. We'll kinda work on something for pie charts and things.
Next, anyone wishing to address the board?
Remember that dollar, Cordaz, that I said, let's break that one dollar down into sections on where all the money goes? Remember that section of that dollar?
I think we used that as a campaign strategy two years ago.
Did we use it? I don't think we ever used it.
I think we did.
Did we?
We did a lot of things two years ago on that. Any else, anyone else wishing to address the board?
All questions are good questions. Don't be afraid to come up. Thank you.
Please come up and join us.
Morning.
My name is Tom Dunder. I'm a new resident of North Ridgeville.
Thank you for coming to our community.
Thank you. I lived previously in Medina County for thirty years, so this is, this county's due to me, and I remember a lot of things from that county, and now I'm trying to learn about Lorain County. My question, though, is what the three of you individually, what your stand is, and which of these three proposals you would pick?
Me personally, I like the five-year temporary quarter percent for five years. I like, I like the proposal that Mr. Williams brought forth, but I think it's too confusing, and I think people have a hard time understanding and grasping it. So, I believe the five-year quarter percent instead of the fifty, half a percent for, and giving a break on the property taxes. That's my perspective.
Okay.
Well, as an engineer, my answer, always, it depends. If we're talking about selling it to the public, it's a quarter percent for three years. I think that's probably the best one to get the public to vote for it. Personally, I like the half percent with the property tax reduction. What it does become an issue with getting it, the information out to the public, is it won't appear that way on the ballot. It only appears as a half percent. And then, there's issues with people concerned about two commissioners voting to bring back the property tax. I don't think that would happen, but that is a concern. So, but I like having the property tax reduction.
Oh, option number one. I mean, I've been talking about that since we've discussing that. It gives us a five-year look, it's a temporary quarter percent. It will be easier, I believe, to sell to the public, and it gives us a longer time to stretch out the upcoming deficit, which I believe will be actually more after my meetings with the auditor and deputy auditor, about the lowering of property tax evaluation, which will affect our inside millage. The half percent property tax, again, an interesting move as a swap-out to relieve some property taxes on homeowners, and picking up difference, but as Commissioner Williams said, that will be on the ballot, just say a half a percent. And then, based on a decision we would make here, and also in speaking to our finance people, when you start to lower a dedicated revenue source, similar to what's happening in Washington, DC, you start having Moody's and Fitch's and Standard and Poor's start downgrading your ability, no different than, as I made the explanation last week, it's sort of like going to buy a house, and you tell them, well, I'm going to pay you back, I'm gonna have some revenue in, but I don't know how I'm gonna have it three years, and you're taking out a thirty-year mortgage. Yeah, it makes it difficult to sell yourself financially and fiscally responsible, because the county has held back on a lot of capital improvements and, you know, but we're getting to the point that things are decreasing in usage, as Doug Messer pointed out from domestic relations last week. And also, just moving forward, I think that five-year gives us the time to work through our budget and attrition out to get to that zero point in 2016, without trying to crash-land it, which you might have to if it doesn't pass anyway. Mr. Dunder?
Thank you. If, if I were going to do anything, I am always, I will always go the route where if I can get a reduction, for example, in my property tax that was fixed, where I, then I have the control over what I spend, as you said.
Right.
I believe the only fair tax is a consumption tax or a, a sales tax, because I can, I can either buy a Lexus or I can buy a Ford Focus, but I control that.
Correct.
There are other, there are other communities that I've lived in that have sales tax on food and, and other things as well, and we don't have that in the state of Ohio.
Right.
I'm a, I'm a real, I'm probably as conservative as anybody in this room, but I know that there-
You've met Mr. Newman yet?
I have. I have, but I have. But, but I believe less government is better government, personally. I believe that what's so important about this meeting is the people have the best control over what takes place locally.
Right.
Once it leaves here, we, we really lose control. So, but I, I'm willing to bite the bullet, and because I'm retired, I haven't had a raise in two years. I understand how everybody is suffering, and I'm willing to bite the bullet if I can get a little bit of a thing with respect to the sale, to the-
Property tax.
Property tax, because that is not something I get a chance to control so much. But the spending, I can. And I'm willing to bite the bullet. So, whatever you folks decide, you know, we will go with and we will vote on it. But I understand the need, but I also appreciate the control that the people have on, on what they spend. I think that's the fairest. And I know there are needs out there, and I know there, there are issues that are difficult, but I believe personally that the fairest thing is, is a sales tax, rather than property taxes or other taxes. And I agree with the gentleman that said, when we, those people come through, and maybe you don't agree with this totally, but I don't care if, if, how many people come through and spend some money on sales tax. I would rather have everybody that aren't property owners, as well as people who are transients or going through, just passing through, pay a sales tax, because that helps us in this community.
Right.
Correct.
So, my stand would be a sales tax, and you have to, you folks have to make that decision. But I do like the part of the real estate, of the property tax reductions to compensate for that.
Do you under, how much is the value of your property? So, I don't know you, so.
I'm gonna guess maybe a hundred and a half.
Okay, so about, it's about thirty-eight dollars per hundred thousand.
Hundred thousand, that's what I understand, so.
So, it would be fifty-seven dollar decrease. The average homeowner on a half a percent would spend about seventy-six dollars more a year in sales tax. So, it's a, like I said, it just becomes, on the numbers, and I'm not disagreeing with the less property taxes, I couldn't agree more. But in the same amount of money at a quarter percent, I think would be easier with the public when schools come out with levies and everything, and those are all property tax-driven, and there are some new ones, property tax, income tax being considered in other municipalities or school districts, that it might be easier to talk to the public about a number and a quarter percent instead of a property tax and a sales tax increase. And as Commissioner Williams said, it will not say anything about the property tax on the ballot. It would just say increasing the sales tax one-half of one percent. It doesn't say there's some other mechanisms that have to be put into motion to change that number. That's all I'm saying. I'm not arguing your point at all, I'm just trying to give a-
I understand that a hundred percent, and I'm not even speaking for anybody else but me.
Okay.
I'm simply saying, if I can lower my property tax by whatever, I will control my spending with respect to sales tax. If I spend twenty-five dollars more a year, then I spend twenty-five dollars more. I may spend five dollars less. So, that's, but I have the control. Not anybody else, but I have the control. And that's what I, that's what I look for. And that's, that's, I guess, my point. So, good luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What was the sales tax in Medina?
Six point five.
I knew you were gonna ask.
I was gonna ask him. I know what he wants.
It's, I don't know, six and a half, six and three-quarters now, maybe?
Okay. That didn't make you move to Lorain County, though, because of the higher sales tax, did it?
[laughing]
No, as a matter of fact, I go back to Medina County a lot, because my church is there. I know, I'm familiar with it. My, you know, I, I just do a lot of things.
You shop out there?
I do.
Okay.
I do shop there.
That just goes back to the statement about, that David was making about how many people are leaving here and shopping elsewhere.
Well, I don't go, I don't go there necessarily just to shop, but I go there because I'm familiar with it.
Right, your fam, your regular, the way you live, your lifestyle.
And as I get more familiar with Lorain County, I'll spend more time here, I hope.
Okay. I just had to ask a question. I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, I understand. Sure.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address the board this morning? George, any words of wisdom? It's nice to see you back there.
Uh, no.
Okay. No, okay. No one else from the public? Any comments from the board? Commissioner Williams?
No.
Well, to close this up, thank you for all your comments. We appreciate the dialogue. Please send us any correspondence. We're available by email, phone calling, as to your preference. We will be making a decision next Tuesday. We're having a special meeting here on the twenty-sixth.
It's a regular board meeting.
It's a regular board meeting, but we'll make that decision, because we're also having a meeting on Wednesday. And that will be at nine-thirty. It will be on our agenda.
I should mention, I'm sure you've all got a copy of it, but Marianne Manning from the TB Clinic had sent us all an email, and she has about seven people in her staff, and they were talking and discussing the different options, and they all agreed we needed to do something, but they, I think they all were more inclined to the fixed quarter percent, and I'm not sure if it was a three-year or the five-year, but they had questions about the kickback on the property tax or the reduction on the property tax. And I just, I love that idea, and like, like this gentleman said, you know, you have more control over your spending that way, but it really, there's not as many people like him that take the time to really get educated and understand what we're trying to do and how that could help them in the long run. So, I personally think, you know, a fixed quarter percent is probably what I'm going to vote for, unless I hear something from somebody that really hits me and changes my mind, so.
Commissioner Williams?
No comment.
Okay. Would you like to bring the public hearing to a close?
I'll second.
Scott?
Aye.
We're going back into executive session.
I have to close the meeting first.
Okay.
Scott?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. We have scheduled for an eleven-thirty budget hearing, but I believe we could start that, Mr. Cordaz or Mr. Ennis, ahead of time?
It's not a public meeting, starting twenty-one.
Correct. So, we can start anytime. We can call a ten-minute break, and then start in about ten minutes, Mr. Looby?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Looby.
Sure, whatever's good. You wanna notify them if they get out a little bit early from what they're doing, that we're gonna start about, say, eleven o'clock. That's fifteen minutes. Okay, thank you. Thank you, everyone, for joining us today.
Thank you.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorain County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at nine-thirty at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown Alaria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.loraincounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.
We're gonna start the budget hearings with our Court of Common Pleas. We all turned on. Everything's ready to go. Mr. Looby, it's your floor. Welcome, Judge Celebsky.
Commissioners, good afternoon. Good morning. Tim Looby, on behalf of the General Division Common Pleas Court, I have with me Judge Celebsky, the administrative judge. Here, we're very pleased to, I got my, I switched. Oh, okay.
He was speaking, so.
Oh, thank you. Very pleased today to present the Court's, the General Division Court's 2012 budget. We look forward to answering any questions that the Commissioners may have, as well as the public. Without further ado, I'll go ahead and get started. The General Division is committed to working with the County Commissioners and all Justice System partners to ensure that we remain efficient, effective, and accountable. Not only do we believe in the process of continual self-improvement, but we think our actions will speak for themselves. Some of the recent efficiencies and cost reductions that we've been able to achieve with our Justice System partners, and again, this is to point out, this is not just the Common Pleas Court, but this is all the Justice System partners. Approximately a year ago, we hired a jail expediter. That individual was employed through grant funding. She's been actively involved in reducing the jail population. We're very pleased, and the sheriff can speak to it probably in more depth, as to the continual daily jail reduction that we've been able to achieve. Real dollars. I think the average cost per prisoner, prisoner is ninety to ninety-three dollars a day. So, every person that she's able to get out on that bond is a dollar savings to the general fund. Video arraignment, sentencing, and hearings. For over a decade, we've been doing video arraignments. That has resulted, for those that may perhaps in the public don't, that don't know, or maybe even some of the Commissioners, that allows the sheriff deputies not to have to take prisoners from the jail, bring them over to the Justice Center for arraignments. That used to be a very expensive process. A lot of manpower was involved. We're still doing that, but we've, we've further expanded upon that. In the last year to year and a half, we, the judges have been conducting both sentencing and hearings for out-of-state defendants in our court through the video arraignment process. It's resulted typically what would happen is a sheriff deputy, two deputies actually, would get on a plane, fly out to Oklahoma, wherever the defendant might be, bring them back. There was extensive costs obviously involved in that, manpower hours, and delay. As a result of the utilization of modern technology, we're able to make some significant savings to the general fund. We're very pleased to do that. Indigent attorney appointments. I know this is a, an issue that's near and dear to the Commissioners' hearts. You're aware, obviously, of the Court's involvement in inquiring about whether or not a public defender's office may be more advantageous to the county. Again, we ultimately don't, don't recommend one way or another, but we think it's important that we continue to analyze those issues, and we're pleased that we were in the forefront of bringing that to the Commissioners' attention. Some of the things that we've been able to do recently, just last week, we had a mandatory training for all attorneys that wish to have, receive criminal appointments. They had to sit here for an hour and a half, listen to a representative from the Public Defender's Office from the state of Ohio. The overall intent and objective there was to ensure that the, when the attorneys submit their fee bills, that they're doing so in compliance with the attorney, with the public defender's regulations, because when they don't, then the county doesn't get the thirty-five percent matching funds back. And so, we took it on as a responsibility to make sure that we could acquire every single dollar that's possible and make sure those attorneys are being compliant. Commissioners, and please feel free to interrupt if you have questions that are going along. I more than have to take those. We also eliminated in the last two years the mileage reimbursement for attorneys. We've limited, we limited their investigator costs, and we've required them to provide a greater fee bill, so that we could, the judges can more appropriately review those and, when appropriate, cut them. Something that I'm, I'm very pleased to report that resulted in my slide being changed just today. This morning, the, the Domestic Relations Court Administrator, myself, entered into a memorandum of understanding that will allow us to reduce some costs that our PSI department was going to have to incur, to have access to their case management system. We were gonna have to pay the vendor probably about thirteen hundred dollars to do that. We entered an agreement where we're going to provide the Domestic Relations, through non-general fund, five hundred dollars, and it's gonna save the bulk for the, the county. Countywide case management system. For over two years, I personally have been heading up a, a group that has been looking to replace our current case management system. It's antiquated. Our vendor has not been reinvesting in the system, and it's caused some serious problems, both in the clerk's office and the court's office. A great deal as, as far as a limitation on our efficiencies. One of the things we looked at, it would've been relatively more easy, not easy by any means, but more easy for us to do what we've done in the past, which is simply to go out and purchase for the General Division solely a new case management system. One of the things we are trying to do right now is to involve the Domestic Relations Court, the Probate Court, and quite uniquely in Ohio, the municipal courts as well. One of the things the public perhaps doesn't understand, and maybe even the Commissioners, is that a great deal of our cases that come to the Common Pleas Court start in the municipal courts. There's been a lot of work that's been done on those cases before they ever get to us. All that work is lost, because our clerks and the court have to re-duplicate all those efforts that originally went into that case, including the prosecutor's office. They get those cases, they gotta put them into their system as well. And so, the thought was to bring all- And so, the thought was to bring all these groups together, come up with a single case management system. Uh, we will get, uh, greater purchasing power, because we're coming in as a group, we're having multiple purchasing sources providing for that, not all the general fund, and ultimately save resources. So that is some of the things that we've been doing over the last year to year and a half, to save the entire, um, justice system money. One of the things that I was struck with last week, uh, prior to Mr. Messer's, uh, presentation during the sales tax, um, meeting, was some comments by some Lorraine County residents. Uh, a number of individuals got up and made the point, uh, about their frustration with, uh, with private industry and government not, not being on the same page. They said, you know, why isn't that government, they weren't talking about courts per se, but I think we're equally as responsible. Why isn't that government, uh, is as efficient and, um, accountable as private industry? And I think that one of our jobs, uh, as representatives for the court, is to make sure that people understand that there is a difference between private industry and government. Um, private industry primarily has to worry about two, two objectives, they have to be efficient and effective. If they're not, they simply go out of business. That's not one of the options that we have, we can't just close up our doors. We have obligations that are imposed both statutorily, uh, by case law, and by our constitution. We also do have to be efficient and effective. Part of that is this process right here, where the public gets to see us, we come forward, we present our budget, not only do the Commissioners ask, but the public can come forward and say, you're not doing a good job. And we're more than happy to respond to those criticisms and, and, and take them back if they're appropriate. But we also have to be worried about things like justice, due process, equal protection, the rule of law. And I think something that everybody can appreciate is that at the court, we don't get to choose what business comes in our door. In private industry, if a, uh, line of business is not effective, if that taco that you're selling isn't selling effectively, you don't sell it anymore. That makes sense, we can't do that. Uh, and that, that actually leads me to the next por- portion of my presentation, let's see if this works. The, the widget, so to speak, that the courts have, if there is a widget, would be our cases. Um, what you have in front of you is a breakdown of the case, the current pending cases for the court from two thousand and seven to two thousand and ten. Um, two thousand and ten is the last year that we have, usually it takes the Supreme Court about three to four months, uh, after each year to get it, so we won't have two thousand and eleven in a while. But what you can see on that page, this is again the total caseload, a combination of criminal and civil, is that consistently, year by year, Lorraine County is either number one or number two in case filings. And for, uh, the public that may not be aware, typically Lorraine County is compared, because of population side, to Butler, Lake, Mahoning, and Trumbull. The next docket I, or the next document that I'm gonna show you, I think is even more, more compelling. It pulls out the criminal case load for the court. Um, so, civil is out, this is just the Court's criminal caseload. And what you'll see for Lorraine County in each year is that we are number one. Not only are we number one, but we are number one by a significant amount. Let's take two thousand and ten for example. You'll see that Lorraine County has a active criminal caseload for each judge of a hundred and ninety-one. The next closest is Mahone- Mahoning County of a hundred and thirty. And Commissioners, I, I can't tell you enough, you, you've heard it, you, you know it, the public has heard it, but I, I think this, this point bears repeating, which is, we all know how expensive criminal justice is. And when you take and look at this number in comparison to other counties, I, I think it, it, it really shows the, the problem that we are facing. I mean, we have each of the judges in Lorraine County in two thousand and ten had a hundred and ninety-one, uh, pending criminal cases. I, I mean, compared to Lake County, similar-sized county, thirty-four, Butler, eighty-nine. I, the, the resources it takes to manage those are just unbelievable. And ultimately, when we get into the numbers, the numbers speak for themselves, they actually, these cases, they require resources, it's simple as that.
Tim, not to interrupt you, but I mean, that's a good case point there. Um, what is the reasoning behind us being twice, I mean, Butler's our closest one, 'cause Lake's, you know, seventy, eighty thousand less than us, but Lorraine having a hundred and ninety-one criminal cases for a judge of Butler having eighty-nine, is the grand jury true billing too many? Do we have a, I mean, is there a reason that we're uptick in criminal cases? Or is it just that much more coming through our muni level, 'cause you don't get a case unless it comes through muni anyway?
Absolutely, yeah, we're, we're not out there seeking business. Um, Commissioner, I, you know, any opinion I would have?
Is there something with our judicial system that's caused you?
That's out of whack, you know, I truly don't have an opinion on that. I think if you ask the prosecutor's office, they will tell you, soon as a police officer stops arresting these people, we will stop having cases.
I think I've heard George say that before.
Yeah.
Yes, I've heard that.
Um, so, you know, I, I would hate to believe, 'cause I live in Lorraine County, um, I would hate to believe that we have a, a greater percentage of crime than the, the next, uh, closest, and then we're not talking about one county, we, we've got four other counties here. Um, and I'm gonna go further, you're gonna see it's not just the, these other counties, I, I got a comparison that's gonna show you the twelve most populous counties. I, I don't know, I, I would truly defer that question.
Because I know your slide's coming, but I thought this is a place to start the dialogue.
Commissioner, I, I don't know the answer to why, I will tell you that we're working as hard as we can to deal with it, but we deal with it after it's already come into the system. Um, there are, there are those that are much more qualified, the, uh, law enforcement, the sheriff's office, uh, and the prosecutor's office that can attest as to why that is. So I, I wouldn't offer an opinion.
Where are the majority of the cases coming from?
Yeah, you know what, honestly, we, I don't know. I think they're probably coming from your biggest cities, Lorraine and Aleria typically.
And mostly drug, or?
Directly or indirectly, indirectly, I would.
You have to come to the microphone, George, sorry. We'll get, we'll get shouted at.
Prosecutors involved now.
Now, I'm gonna give Jerry the challenge.
Jerry, is George allowed to speak yet?
I, I don't have the, I don't have the percentages in front of me, but certainly, um, a vast, certainly more than fifty percent of the cases that we see, there's some drug component to it. It may not be a direct charge, per se, or it may not have been the most significant charge. Um, but there was, there was, there's drugs in that mix somewhere.
If someone kills somebody in the act of committing a crime because they're trying to steal drugs, drugs are part of that crime.
Drugs are, drugs, and I, not just drugs, I mean, you're thinking, when you think of drugs, I, I put them together, drugs and alcohol. I don't think that you can necessarily not include alcohol in the mix. But certainly, the vast majority of cases come out of Lorraine, Aleria, for any number of reasons, not the least of which are the two most populous, uh, cities.
Any also economic status of those residents?
Well, uh, certainly, um, employment plays a major role in uptick in crime, without a doubt. And as has been stated here, yes, there are cases that come to the grand jury that don't go through the municipal court system, but it's a very, very, very small percentage. Predominantly, I, I would guesstimate ninety-five percent of the cases start at the municipal court level, where they go through a process and a preliminary hearing for the purpose of the court determining whether or not there's probable cause of believable crimes have been committed, and if it's a felony, then they bind it over to the grand jury, and then there is a second probable cause process through the grand jury. Um, so I'd say ninety-five, five percent of them certainly would start at the municipal court level.
The majority of these cases do go to trial then, or?
Oh, the vast majority of the cases do not go to trial.
They do not?
No, no, the vast majority of the cases do not go to trial. I don't have the numbers in front of me, but, um...
If it's one, one to two percent.
What is, what's the number?
I mean, if it's one to two percent of cases go to trial, um, that would be typical.
I mean, if you think about it logically, and you look at these numbers, and say it's a hundred and, what, ninety-one?
Yeah, a hundred and ninety-one, two thousand and...
For a judge, for a judge type six, you know, it doesn't take long to do the math, twelve hundred cases, how many days are there in the year?
Yeah, uh, this, any court, and the Supreme Court particularly will tell you.
Couldn't do it.
Any court that's trying cases is an inefficient court. Um, you cannot work enough hours, you cannot have enough judges, we don't have enough resources to try cases. Our job is to actually settle the cases. Ultimately, if those, that, that process is unsuccessful, then we are there as a mechanism to do it. But, um, we're very pleased in the active involvement, both on the civil side and the criminal side, in settle cases, 'cause we have to.
And as you're going to hear, as you go through all of this, and many of you already know this, the system's interactive. It's, it's just like anything else, you can't view the Court of Common Pleas, or the Domestic Juvenile Court, or the Prosecutor's Office, or the Clerk of Court's Office, or the Sheriff's Office, in a vacuum. They're interactive. Um, needless to say.
Right, there's no prosecutors in an office, and judges can't perform his duties.
Right, and if nobody got arrested, we'd have no cases to charge.
We just have a lot more laws on the books now than we did years ago.
Well, as I was saying back there, I can remember back in nineteen seventy-six, when, when I first, uh, started practicing law, um, and there were lights back then, by the way. And the Criminal, Criminal Code, chapter twenty-nine, was a book this thick. Now, it's a series of volumes like this. I mean, and you're talking about a short thirty-five years. The, 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 the numbers of laws, the different laws, the, the breaking down of laws, where one law might have dealt with a particular set of circumstances, now they have broken down into seven subsections, so it's, it's a lot different than it was even, like I say, thirty-five years ago.
Thanks, George. Great, Tim.
I want some time during, uh, the prosecutor's presentation.
Not a problem, you have all the time you like.
Uh, Commissioners, the next slide I want to direct your attention to is a comparison for both two thousand and nine, and the next one will be two thousand and ten, of, uh, Lorraine County compared to the most twelve populous counties. Again, I think it, it, it tells a story. We are, we have a high percentage of cases that are in our system, that are criminal-related, that take resources. We have no choice, we have to deal with these, and it costs money. Uh, the last one is, again, is for two thousand and ten, and this is the first time that you'll see another county has surpassed Lorraine, that's Franklin County. And, um, Franklin County, one thing I would note for you is that Franklin County, while they, at least on the chart, look like they have more cases, they have been slated to get two new judges by the Supreme Court, so that would actually bring them to nineteen. And when you divide that nineteen into their total caseload, I think that brings it down to a hundred and eighty-five, so, once again, yay, we have, uh, surpassed anyone else in the state for highest criminal caseload volume. So, not numbers that, uh, it's not, it's something that I think that we can be pleased about or displeased about, it's just the, the realities of what we have to face. Uh, though not required, in the last decade, the Court has not created a new, new general fund position without county commissioner approval. Additionally, in the last decade, the Court has created fourteen new positions, which had no reliance on the general fund. Perhaps that's a point that goes to the question that one of the gentlemen earlier was asking. They see individuals in, in government, per se, being hired, and they attribute that to large ask on the part of county, county government, or even you, the county commissioners. That's absolutely not true. Uh, those positions, at least with respect to the fourteen that we hired, are, um, not because we needed more people on payroll, uh, it's not because, and, and we didn't ask the general fund for those positions, it was because there was a need, we were obligated to fill it, and we did. Um, in two thousand, two thousand and twelve, will be the fifth year that the, that the General Division employees have not received a compensation increase.
Despite having their healthcare and everything else raised.
Absolutely, in fact, I, I didn't make that point, but I think it is, it bears making, which is that ultimately, those employees have been, have been cut, absolutely.
They've been cut. Right.
Their cost of living has gone down in the last five years, um, and I think that's gonna continue into the foreseeable future. Um, personnel is one of the Court's largest, largest budget items. As a result of budget reductions, the Court, where feasible, has reduced staffing levels and employee hours. Layoffs have resulted in judicial staff having to assume additional duties without any increase in compensation or a reduction in their current obligations. George spoke to this issue, and I think it, again, is something that, that needs to be, um, brought out to the public. As a result of legislative mandates, new obligations are continually being posed upon the Court without any corresponding increase in resources. Just in the last two years, we've seen a huge spike in civil stalking protective orders. Um, those are order, those are cases where the legislature has mandated that the Courts accept these, that we are prohibited by law from charging any kind of fees. And we have an abundance of these cases, and they take up a tremendous amount of our time. Uh, somebody has a dispute with their neighbor, they're, we're fortunate in some respects, if it involves a, uh, child or a, a domestic situation, the Domestic Relations Court gets the handle of it, but we have an inordinate number of these cases that come in because, uh, individuals call law enforcement, and law enforcement says, go down to the Common Pleas Court, we, it's not really a crime, we can't help you, but there's this magic thing called a civil stalking protective order. And, um, when you apply for one of these, we have to deal with it. We can't charge them a cost, it can be a ridiculous case, um, we still have to deal with it. Um, pre-sentence investigation reports, as the Commissioners well know, just this year, we had imposed on us, by the state, a new obligation. We now have to perform pre-sentence investigation reports. Um, we would've been happy to avoid that, but we didn't have an option, so again...
And to tag into that, though, is the assumption that we were going to get some overhead costs involved with that, and it's since been turned down for an email I received?
We, there was no, we, we had a very heated, uh, discussions with the state over this process. Uh, again, we went into this kicking and screaming, didn't want this, uh, they said, you're doing it. Um, we had a meeting, we actually tried to have a face-to-face meeting with the representatives from the Department of Corrections, they refused to meet with us. They decided that they would, uh, attend by conference call. So, uh, present were Judge Celebsky, myself, and our chief probation officer. And originally, their proposal was that we would have four individuals, four and a half individuals to staff this department, and they would be appraised, paid approximately ten dollars an hour, and that we would receive nothing as far as other support for that. We negotiated, we were fortunate to get it up to fourteen dollars an hour, um, and sixteen dollars an hour for a supervisor, we got two additional employees. Um, we were promised that we would receive some funding for things like, uh, build-outs, that, uh, um, the office furniture, uh, cubicles, that kind of stuff. Ultimately, when we went to submit the budget, they said, no, even though they told us, you, we'll, we'll give you that. Um, they said, no, we're not gonna approve that. And then the same thing with rent, we made it abundantly clear. You know what, the county, county can't keep giving and giving and giving, you gotta help us out, they said, not gonna happen. I mean, the judge can attest, it was a very heated conversation.
What is the importance of a pre-sentence investigator, just for the...
For the public?
Yes, please.
Um, by law, again, not just because the Court wants to have this little nuance, but by law, in order for somebody not to be sentenced to prison uh, for a felony offense, there has to be a pre-sentence investigation report, uh, performed. Um, somebody might say, well, that's fine, just sentence them all to prison. There's repercussion with that. Um, there is a extensive amount of data, uh, from the criminal justice field that says individuals that are sentenced to prison for low-level offenses go to prison and become better criminals. Um, and those individuals come back to their originating community. And so, as a result, there is a impact for us if we don't treat these individuals right, if we don't lower what's called recidivism. Um, if we just stick these individuals in prison, we make better criminals, they come back to our local community, and then they break into our houses, they attack our citizens, and then we face, face the repercussions of that. So, that is in a, a long, drawn-out way why we have PSI units, and they do serve a purpose. Uh, they allow us to, allow the judges to have information in front of them, so they can make an informed decision as to where this individual should go. It, are they amenable to some kind of community correction, are they just simply a bad egg? And really, this guy's already, uh, a hardened criminal, and we're not gonna really affect the outcome, so let's send him to prison. So that's what a PSI, a unit does.
Is the, uh, general fund picking up the tab for the healthcare costs?
They are not. Uh, at least all personnel costs are being borne by the, um, state right now.
Okay.
The new one is next, Tim. New foreign interpreters we had, we are required to...
Oh, absolutely, that just came down, uh, yesterday, Commissioner.
Yesterday.
Uh, this, the Supreme Court, in their infinite wisdom, um, decided that, um, and, and I don't think their, their thought process was misplaced, they, because of legal issues, realized that throughout the state of Ohio, there's a great deal of disparity in the quality of interpretive services. And as a result, uh, from, as a, of, of federal, um, involvement, they, they realize that the state of Ohio better get its act together, or the feds are gonna come in and say, all these cases that you tried, where the guy really didn't understand, we're gonna overturn those, and you gotta do it again. So that, that gets expensive, and it's really not in all, all of our best interests.
Sort of like the reclassification three years ago of the sexual offenders?
Kind of like that, yeah. Um, that, that's another morass. But on, on the whole interpreter thing, the concept is, now, individuals, in order to, by two thousand and thirteen, in order to be able to perform interpretation, both either sign or foreign language interpretation, they have to go down to Columbus and pass a fairly rigorous test in order to be a certified, um, foreign language interpreter. That costs money. We, we now have nobody in Lorraine County that is certified to do that. Uh, once individuals finally, we have a hard time, as it is, getting interpreters. Uh, but once individuals go down and do that, they're gonna kind of have us, uh, at their advantage, because there is very limited people. Again, not something that we've created, or you created, but something that we have to live with. Yeah. You know, one, again, I, I... You know, one, again, I think it speaks to the efforts that the court continually engages in to rein in our cost. Two years ago, Judge Burge actually spearheaded this. We brought some local individuals in, Spanish-speaking individuals, because that's our greatest foreign language population, to assess them for becoming court interpreters. We hired a local attorney who was certified at the federal level for interpretive services to set up a screening process, a testing process, both written and oral. And we were going to evaluate these individuals and have a cheaper, more efficient group that was going to be able to do this. Ultimately, none of them proved capable of meeting the standards that they had to meet. So, again, we tried, went to a lot of effort to do it and we were unsuccessful, but we continue to strive.
And while we've got you on that, you don't have it mentioned as of yet, but the new pushdown of felony fours and fives, has the state settled on the language for that? I served on the corrections, Justice Corrections Committee for a state organization.
Yeah.
But I haven't seen any finality to that as to how they're going to push those back to us and how the funding's going to go for...
Purportedly, there will be funding.
Yeah, it's going to be like the PSI though?
Yeah, I would say. Usually the state gives with one hand and takes away with the other. And so, that is a real challenge that I think all of us are going to face in the future, which is Senate Bill eighty-six is what you're talking about. And that provides that felonies, F-four and F-fives, it actually takes judges' discretion away in sentencing those individuals to prison. It says, you have to sentence these individuals to community correction situations. And as you well know, most of our community correction funding is already challenged as it is. And so we're going to be expecting that these individuals are having a greater workload. And I'm very hopeful, so is the judge, that we will see a corresponding increase in state funding to provide for those services.
How about the actual housing facilities? Our current CBCF can't take anymore...
You're exactly right. And there's also some mental health components to some of this as well. Commissioner, they have not provided us guidance yet on how they...
That hasn't come out as a...
It has not.
Okay, because I haven't seen anything yet.
We're actively watching it. We're hopefully, we'll be ahead of the curve before the mandates become effective. But it's something that we are nervous about.
Sorry, couldn't see if I could bring that up also.
That's okay. Some of the efficiency savings that we've been able to achieve. We are the only member of the justice system without a separate IT staff. We, about a year and a half ago, we developed a new court website and we did so using the existing accounting resources. We have eliminated the use of outside court reporters. About two years ago, through a great deal of effort on the county administrator, we eliminated the jury bus. We reduced, we have significantly reduced our reliance on printed law journals and legal periodicals. We've implemented a centralized purchasing system that's resulted in a reduction of duplication, cost, waste, storage, and increased security and accountability. We have begun utilizing postcards for court notices. And as a result, we've been able to reduce postage paper and our use of envelope expenses. We've been very aggressive in our negotiation with all of our court vendors. And as a result of some of those, we've been able to communicate our success to other county departments and they've been able to take advantage of some of the savings that we've been able to achieve. We've instituted a rolling program of purchasing versus leasing equipment. After a great deal of analysis, we've discovered that we can save a significant portion of money in our monthly expenses and I'll demonstrate that in our, when I actually get to the numbers. We conducted a printer assessment that resulted in the elimination of all inkjet printers within the court system. The numbers. Now's when everybody's eyes will completely glaze over. I was going to go with ninety-two PowerPoint slides, but I thought I could really entertain you with some spreadsheets. So, without further ado. The first portion of the spreadsheet shows the general fund appropriations. I provided this simply as a comparison chart so that the commissioners could see how they, either themselves or past boards, have appropriated various funds for the court. I think it serves no other purpose other than to show you, at least if you go to the bottom line, as far as appropriations are concerned, that the court is down significantly since two thousand and seven. We were appropriated over four million dollars in two thousand and seven. And in, my mouse will come back. In two thousand and ten, we were appropriated three point two million dollars.
That was eleven.
Oh, I'm sorry, two thousand and eleven. I apologize, can't see up that high.
But still almost twenty-five percent reduction.
Absolutely. More telling, I think, are actually our expenditures. Because it's one thing to talk about appropriations. Expenditures talk about how we're doing, where we're spending our money and how efficiently we're doing it. We're not there, if that's the case. The next slide shows the court's general fund expenditures from two thousand and seven to two thousand and ten. They don't have two thousand and eleven yet because we're not done with this year, obviously. Some of the things that I think are glaringly telling right on the face, as I mentioned earlier, personnel costs, one of the court's largest line items. And that's one of the areas that we are receiving some of the most significant savings. You'll see right there that in two thousand and seven, we had a expenditure of one point nine million dollars. Our general fund expenditures in two thousand and ten are one point four. I'm going to actually move to another slide, which I think makes these comparisons a little better, a little easier to show. It's actually, this shows you all four years, but I want to show you, go right to two thousand and ten and a two thousand and seven comparison. Because this actually provides the differences. As you can see there, that's almost a five hundred thousand dollar difference in less than four years. Similarly, in our adult probation department, we had almost a sixty thousand dollars difference in spending between two thousand and seven and two thousand and ten. It's a small department, it only has two people, but again, our jury commissioners. We had a six thousand dollar savings in their salaries between two thousand and seven and two thousand and ten. Supplies. Talked about that. You know, one of the things, because of some cost measures, some efficiency measures that we implemented, we went from spending forty-six thousand dollars in two thousand and seven to less than twenty in two thousand and ten. Almost a thirty thousand dollar savings. Unfortunately, we can't keep replicating those cost savings. I, you know, I've done that. If somebody can show me a better way to do it again, absolutely, we'll do it. But we've implemented those savings, we've passed our successes on to other departments. Probation is a great, or the probate department, I'm sorry, probate court is a great example. Judge Walther will tell you, ask him, that some of the things that he's been able to do recently are things that we already did two to three years ago. And so, we're pleased that the county is, as a group, is sharing in some of those, but we already made those savings, we can't do it again. Similarly, adult probation, another two thousand dollars that they were able to save.
Contract services team is probably your next large one.
You're exactly right, Commissioner, and that's where I was going to go. That's where we were able to, where we did a great deal of analysis, realized that we were paying an inordinate amount of money every year to lease equipment. And so what we did is we talked to the vendors and said, that's not going to work. We're not going to, and this is primarily on copy units. We're not going to guarantee you that we're going to pay a certain amount every year or a month for certain copies. We'll pay for what we use. We are going to buy equipment instead of leasing it. Somebody say, well, doesn't that cost you more money in the long run? Absolutely doesn't. We found that typically, and this is, you're probably going to find it in your own departments too, that the process was to take a lease, a piece of equipment, lease it for three years, take that same piece of equipment at the end of three years and re-lease it again. So you typically have a six-year lease term on a single piece of equipment. The cost to buy that equipment was typically paid off in year two. Okay, so, we paid it off in year two and make a savings over the next four years. You might say, well, aren't your maintenance costs higher because you bought it versus leasing it? They're not, they're the same. And in fact, we, as part of negotiations, we told our vendors, business as usual is not acceptable. We're not going to pay you the typical fees that we paid in years past. Talked to other vendors and they said, oh, we can do better than that. And we said, if you can't beat this, we're going to go somewhere else. And we played the vendors off each other and did very well.
Tim, with that, I mean, that doesn't make sense to me. We had a talk about this before. Normally, when you do a lease, you're leasing the computer for three years and then in three years, you go with new technology.
Because you need it with a computer.
What's that?
Because, I agree with you. Because new technology's coming along. Doesn't happen with copiers. The copier that, and this is again based on practice, we didn't just say, this is the theory. We went back over the last decade and looked at our process. And you may be different, but at least in our courts, we were leasing equipment for six years. Not three years. We weren't getting a new piece of equipment that was more efficient and more effective. So, six years, we were leasing it. And we would pay another lease in year four through six. And on the same piece of equipment. So we weren't getting a new piece of equipment. They didn't say to us, oh, we're going to give you a new piece of equipment now and here's a reduction in cost or something like that.
That kind of goes against standard IT practices.
I would agree with you, but the number, I mean, we had the data, we looked at it. And we weren't getting new equipment. The companies were coming into us and re-leasing the same piece of equipment. And we also didn't find out, I mean, there wasn't any reason to buy a new copier. I mean, if in three years, somebody can make the case that a new copier would be more efficient and cheaper and the economics work out, okay, let's buy a new copier. But it doesn't.
And with you purchasing them, are you getting into warranty contracts on there?
Absolutely. We had to, again, the standard contract that they provided to the court, after some analysis by me, we found, we said, we're not signing these anywhere. You're going to, they would have all these waivers in there as far as marketability for purposes and they would walk away. We said, no, that's not going to happen. You will warrant it. The typical lease period, they'll tell you that most copiers have a, at least a seven-year warranty of service, that they will come in and warranty it. We said, we want that warranty. We're going to buy it, I want to know that I'm in the same position as if I would lease that piece of equipment. So I get guarantees of seven years on all of our equipment. They guarantee that they will service it. And if they can't service it, they have to replace it.
So you get the, you get the equipment in the contract, or the warranty contract for twenty-two thousand?
Absolutely. Now, what you've seen is, as I said, we had a rolling period where we bought, about every other year, we were buying, our leases were finally coming up and we were able to buy. So now, all the equipment that I, that we have in the court is purchased equipment. That, in seven years, that stuff's going to age. And so, this actually should go down to almost zero in a year or two, hopefully. I mean, we're going to still have small contracts, but not the contracts that we spend on our MFPs or the copiers. And so, in probably two years, we're going to have to restart purchasing new equipment. But again, it's not going to be a huge number and we're going to be saving twenty thousand dollars to forty thousand dollars every year.
Unless they quit making the ink? I said, unless they quit making the ink, copier is a copier.
Well, they've been promising for twenty years, before I ever even went into law, that we were going to be a paperless system. I'll believe it when I see it.
Yeah.
Other numbers that I think that really stand out...
And the increase in professional services is due to what?
True costs. That is a cost that, just like, professional services is the same thing as the attorney fees. Those are the costs that go towards indigent defendants' defense. And so, because we were trying more cases, I think we had some capital cases in two thousand and ten, those are very expensive. I'm very pleased to say that our two thousand and twelve budget does not have those in there. So we put them back in...
You gave them to us.
Absolutely. Well, you were always paying them anyway. And we were going through a stupid game. And so, let's stop playing the games. Either put them in our budget, if you want to put them in our budget, that's fine, but you've got to give us enough to pay them.
How much did you give to us? How much did you get budgeted for that expense before...
For, well, let's go back to appropriation. For, and there was always a big disconnect here, both in attorney fees and professional services.
Right, because we never gave you enough to actually cover it.
We would typically be getting two thousand dollars when we would spend sixty thousand dollars. Now, what you see there, when you see that the sixty-two thousand dollars is an appropriation, that's actually because we transferred funds to, throughout the year, to make that happen. So we weren't originally appropriated sixty-two thousand dollars to start the year. Even though we were going to probably have a sixty-two thousand dollar expenditure, we were given two thousand dollars and then we would repeatedly come over to the commissioners and say, or I would call Lisa and say...
I need money.
Yeah, I need money. So, we're pleased that the more frank, open, consistent system will work for all of us. So we talked about two thousand and seven to two thousand and ten. What you can see there at the bottom line, these are real numbers. We spent seven hundred thousand dollars less, at a general fund dollars, in two thousand and ten than we did in two thousand and seven.
If you could go to the jury fees.
Yep.
When we had a meeting, you explained to me what was going on there and how you were able to reduce it by forty thousand.
That is simply a matter of case volume. I would love to tell you that I could take any kind of responsibility for jury fees, I can't.
The judge made a comment as far as knowing what type of case it is and using his experience.
Absolutely. Not all the judges do that, but Judge Zaleski does it very successfully, which is to say, he will, there might be a... I want to be somewhat hesitant to give away some of our secrets.
Right.
Because they are, they work for us. So Commissioner, if you will bear with me and if I don't explain that in great depth. Because it is something that the judges use effectively to settle cases and it doesn't cost taxpayers money.
There, again, it just comes along with experience, so...
But, you know what? One of the things that, it's a point that should be made. The biggest portions of the court's budget are stuff that the court doesn't control. Our juror fees, attorney fees, professional services. We are, so to speak, the tail. And there's a big giant dog that's wagging out there and we have to respond to that issue. You know, in our tour last, what, two weeks ago or so, or three weeks ago, with Commissioner Williams, he asked, and I think it bears asking, you know, in some of the other slides I'm going to show, we're going to demonstrate that we're going to have a three point two percent reduction in our two thousand and twelve budget over our two thousand and eleven budget. And he said, can you give me some more? Can you give me five percent? Can you give me seven percent, ten percent? And my response was, I would love to, Commissioner, but if I do, I'm being disingenuous to you. Because if I tell you that I can cut you five percent now, the fees and the expenses that are in here, again, they're our best guess based on history of expenses, but probably ninety percent of my expenses are something that I have no control over throughout the year. A case comes in, if a jury is demanded, we have to provide a jury. We don't control that. So those expenses, while if I said to you, I can reduce this line item by five percent or multiple line items by five percent, but mid-year, when I run out of money and you haven't budgeted for that and I've told you that I need three million dollars, but I really need three point two million dollars, I haven't done you a service or the taxpayers a service because they're expecting that I'm going to deliver a budget of three million dollars. And I can't do that because I can't anticipate a lot of these things.
Now, we did talk about fees as well.
Absolutely, and I'm going to get to it. If you will bear with me, I have a presentation on that. This was something that I worked up in anticipation of our, of this presentation and it was something that I actually had never done before. And it was very instrumental to me and I hope you will find it as well. One of the things, what you see, this is the two thousand and ten total operating cost for the court. The first column you'll see is the expenses that were provided out of the general fund, three point five million dollars. The third, that's at the very bottom, right here, Commissioner. Three point five million dollars, which is what we spent for two thousand and ten. The second column provides, let's do this, let me go to the third column. The third column shows you what our total operating expenses were. Our total expenses to operate the General Division Court for two thousand and ten were over five million, five point seven million dollars. You might say, well, okay, how are you doing that? Where's that coming from? I know your responsibility is the general fund. Ultimately, my responsibility and the judge's responsibility is the court as a whole. We've got to make sure it all runs, it all happens. We're able to do that through a couple of different avenues. Special projects accounts, which I'm going to talk about at length. Probation services, which are the fees that defendants, probationers pay when they go through probation. And then grant expenditures from the state. Those primarily support the probation department. And honestly, some of these numbers are staggering. While the general fund provides one point four million dollars as far as personnel cost, these other three groups combined provided almost seven hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. Similarly, with adult probation, five hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars for personnel costs.
Like the fifty percent match?
Yeah, absolutely.
On both of those?
Yep. You know, we could go through, here's another one that's kind of important to point out. Other expenses. The court's foreclosure department, or the court's foreclosure special projects fund. That fund goes to not only provide for the common police court and its management... That fund goes to not only provide for the common police court and its magistratees and personnel, but two hundred thousand of that two, twenty, two twenty-seven goes to the clerk of courts. And that, um, significantly subsidizes their, their, their costs. Those are costs that in the past were paid out of the general fund. But because of what the court was able to do through its special projects accounts, we were able to provide the clerk of courts. They were able to say to us, we dedicate these individuals to foreclosure. They had them before. We didn't have the volume of foreclosure cases. But we'll, we'll dedicate these people to foreclosure, and then you provide us some funding for those individuals. And we were able to do that, and that, that adds up to a lot of money. Um, total money, two point one million dollars. Um, so again, the total court co-operating cost, five point seven. Um, because of these other, uh, programs, grants, um, fees that are charged to probationers and our special projects accounts, we're able to subsidize court operating expenses by over two million dollars. And I think that's something that the public needs to understand. When they're voting on a sales tax, um, that, that's just a small pittance of what it takes to run county government. Do you like individuals who commit crimes against you to be punished? Do you like those individuals to go away to jail? If you, if we don't have the funding to do this, then there's a repercussion. Uh, the last slide I have for you is the court's two thousand and twelve budget. Actually, I have two slides, I think I do have two slides, one more in here. What I did with the two thousand and twelve budget, I think it was, it's somewhat misleading if I just provide a comparison with attorney fees and professional services in there, because we have not put those in our two thousand and twelve budget. And so, if you were to look at our two thousand and twelve budget compared to previous years, it would skew it markedly. In fact, it would show that we are, we are saving, right here in the bottom line, one point, uh, four million dollars. And it's not my representation to you that that is what we're doing. Uh, so, I have, in the next slide, to give you an apples-to-apples comparison, taken out those fees, there were three of them. Uh, professional services, attorney fees, and witness fees. Uh, those are now out of the two thousand and ten years, the two thousand and eleven years, and obviously our two thousand and twelve years. And that gives you a real number that we're bringing to the table for two thousand and twelve savings over two thousand and eleven of eighty-four thousand dollars. Again, that's our expenditures of two thousand and eleven, uh, the appropriation of two thousand and eleven compared to our requested budget of two thousand and twelve. And, again, another telling number, uh, if you compare the two thousand and seven to two thousand and ten expenditures to our two thousand and twelve budget, you'll see that we are, uh, on average, three hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars less.
About ten percent.
Yeah. Okay, that's it with the numbers. Are you sufficiently bored with that?
Yeah, we like pie charts and graphs, right?
David?
We like pie charts and graphs.
Well, I figured that they would be less than stimulating, so I have, I, I kinda, I wanted to bottom-line it for some of this stuff. Uh, I went through each year, uh, the last couple of years, and, um, just provided a, a bottom-line number so people could just see some real, uh, hard data that, that isn't in a boring spreadsheet. Um, in two thousand and eight, and one of the things I'm gonna point out for each of these slides, when I showed you that two million dollars, um, of additional court, court funding and costs back in the previous slide, that encompassed three things. That encompassed, uh, special projects, that encompassed, um, state funding through grants, and it also com- encompassed the user fees that are charged for probationers. What I'm showing you in, at least in each of the, uh, first line items in these subsequent slides is just special projects, none of those other two. So, really, this number would be bigger, but I, I think this tells the picture. Uh, in two thousand and eight, through general fund subsidies, through the court's special projects fund, we provided this to the sheriff, the clerk of court, the mediation department, the foreclosure department. The general fu- or the, uh, special projects account provided four hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars in, in services. We were also successful that year to return a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars to the general fund, resulting in six hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. Um, I wanna talk about that last, uh, the return to the general fund. One of the individuals last week made the point, you give the government money, they'll always ask for more. Here's a real number that shows the otherwise. We gave money back. We were fiscally responsible, we were conservative, and we gave money back. So, we can do it, and we will do it. Two thousand and nine. Yeah. I have a, I have a, a slide that's gonna talk about, yeah. The judge was asking about, uh, addressing some more of these special projects funds, and I, I do wanna address that, 'cause I think that is a, some, there's some important points with respect to that. Um, in two thousand and nine, because of the subsidies through the court's special projects accounts, we were able to provide to various county government services, eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. Um, because of some more budget cuts in two thousand and nine, we weren't able to return as much to the general fund. We were able to a- return twenty-four thousand dollars, but not an insignificant amount of money. Um, during that year, and again, I think this, this last point speaks to the reduction as to what we were able to achieve, our personnel budget was reduced by twenty-three percent. That was six hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. The court still went on, we still provided the services, and we did a very good job. Uh, as a result, in two thousand and nine, there were savings to the general fund of over one point five million dollars. Two thousand and ten. Um, again, you can see our general fund subsidies continued to increase, one point one million dollars. That year, we were able to return three hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars to the general fund. Our personnel budget was reduced again by three percent to the tune of sixty-four thousand dollars. We also received zero allocation from the criminal justice fund. The total that year for two thousand and ten was over one point six million dollars.
What was the zero for the criminal justice fund? Why did you receive zero?
Well, I don't know, Commissioner. Uh, there were, obviously, as you know, the sales tax was put on, that sales tax was put on for justice fund purposes. Um, as part of that, the court is a justice fund. And I know where Commissioner Kalo's gonna go with this, 'cause I had a heat, I wouldn't use the word heated, spirited discussion with your budget director yesterday. And not to steal...
What it was, was an accounting move, though, to use that money to fill in, so it was a...
And I told your, your budget director that I acknowledge and respect that for accounting purposes, it makes no difference.
Right.
Okay? Here's the reason, and it, and it meant something to, to the judges, and here's why. Um, I know you've been advised by your, your competent counsel that, um, with respect to other county governments, um, the court, that it is impermissible to say to us, we, we have a bottom line we need to reach. We're gonna cut everybody by twenty percent. Okay, that's been the case in years past, and, and you hopefully well know that that is impermissible. That's been what's happened in the past, and that's kind of where those funds went to absorb the difference. You said, everybody, we're gonna cut you twenty percent, um, and we're gonna use these funds to do that. I would submit to you that if we're doing a good job, and we've been good stewards of, of funds, and we require additional operating expenses, that perhaps we would be eligible and entitled to some of those funds. So, I would agree with you from a theoretical standpoint, accounting, it makes exact sense to do what you did.
And that's what the move was, to, basically, accounting, it wasn't a reward or punish of any department, so...
Absolutely. And I wouldn't... Not at all, Commissioner, and it wouldn't be my intent to suggest that this was a punishment at all. Just as a public dialogue, that the public is aware, when the court is, is, is held out, as, and we are, we are representing significant costs in public dollars. Um, but if we're held out, and there's a sales tax that ultimately goes to fund us, if we're doing a good job, and we're good stewards for the, for the public, there should be a recognition for that. And that, that's all that that point goes to. And it, and the same thing goes to two thousand and eleven.
We're patting you on the back for saving us so much money.
I, I'm glad to do it, and will continue to do my utmost in that respect. Um, two thousand and eleven, one point one million dollars. Um, obviously, this year isn't done. Uh, we're hoping that we will continue the trend as we have, and return funds to the general fund. Uh, at this point in time, I, I can't make any projections as to how that'll, that'll occur, and what those funds will be. Um, as the commissioners well know, um, before any other department, other than the clerk of courts, when we started out January of this year, we were, us and the clerk, were the only two departments that took a five percent cut in our personnel cost. And again, that resulted in a hundred and three thousand dollar savings to the general fund. Uh, total over this period, two thousand and eight to two thousand and eleven, five, over five million dollars. Big numbers. Special projects fees.
When you talked about the reduction in, uh, employee expenses.
Yep.
By twenty-three and five, and I'm sh- I'm not sure what the other figure was.
Yep.
Is that reduction in staff?
Yes, we had, we had to lay off personnel.
You did lay off?
We had also a reduction in, um, hours for some personnel, and I'll, and I'll see that, you'll see that later in some slides, because that's actually, uh, bearing upon some of our efficiencies and our effectiveness. Um, I'll, I'll touch on it later, but I'll, I'll speak to it now. Our jury commissioners, we now make them go home at three, three o'clock. Um, and as a result, so they, they have less hours, and we've say, we're saving money as a result, but they're not available. If a case is, is being settled the day before, and, uh, judicial staff are working on that case, try to settle it, that's their job, and they do a good job at it. Um, and sometimes they're here late into the night. Uh, if they're here at, uh, three-thirty, and the jury commissioners have already left, um, then if that case was set for trial the next day, there's no way to cancel that, that notice and, and let those people know. So, we have forty people that are coming in that we're paying ten dollars for. So, that's four hundred dollars that we expend on as a result of efficiencies that we've, we've tried to achieve. So, there, there's a, a trade-off as a result of that, and there, you'll see some other ones that I'm gonna touch on later. Um, special projects accounts. Um, this was kinda brought up during, uh, Mr. Messer's presentation, and I, I think I have some data, Commissioner, that will hopefully address some of your, your concerns. Um, one of the things that I think is important for the public to at least understand is that throughout the state of Ohio, many courts charge different fees to file a case. Those fees are deposits, okay? In the state of Ohio, ninety-nine point nine percent of the fees that are assessed on a case are all statutory, they're all the same, okay? So, whether you go here, Medina, Cuyahoga, or anywhere else in the state of Ohio, ninety-nine point nine percent of our fees are all the same. We may, different courts may charge a higher deposit or a smaller deposit, it doesn't matter, that's just a deposit. The costs are the same on the case. At the end of the day, if those costs exceed the value of the case, you have to bill the people for money, or some, some counties will charge a very high deposit, and then they have to refund those funds at the end of the case. At the end of the day, those, that's not our money, it's not your money, it's not the clerk's money, that's just a deposit. The only difference in the state of Ohio, from court to court, is special projects accounts. And there is some vari- variation in those fees. Um, we have for over a decade been actually charging special projects fees. We started first in our mediation department. That, that program was started as a grant. At the conclusion of the program, uh, the court deemed it to be a valuable one, and it was one that we didn't come to the county commissioners, it was one that we felt fell within the, uh, uh, rubric of the special project statute, and so, we created a fee that's charged to all users when they file a case to provide for that service. That's what special projects are. And anytime somebody files a civil case, they pay a fee that the court has created, uh, for, um, certain purposes. In Lorain County, we have three of those, and I'm gonna get into some more depth a, a little bit. I wanna give you some further background as to some of the limitations that we have with special projects accounts. Um, there are primarily two, and this is something that all courts, both in, in Ohio and actually throughout the country face. Um, courts cannot be user-fee-based. That's by, by our constitution. We believe as a society that, um, the cost of justice cannot be a barrier to justice. Um, and historically, the thought is, if it's too expensive to come to jail, or come to court, that people will take justice into their own hands. And so, as a society, we've said that, um, as far as courts are concerned, we're not going to let the courts just charge whatever fees they want, or are even necessary to run them. We're not allowed. So, that's the first limitation on our ability to charge fees. It's kind of a broad one, it's kind of squishy, but we just have that in the back of your mind. The next one that's a little bit clearer, um, deals with special projects accounts. Um, these are a statutory creation. The legislature has said that, uh, courts, under certain circumstances, you can assess fees. And here are the circumstances. Um, I'm, I'm gonna direct your attention to an Attorney General's opinion, it's a two thousand and one Attorney General's opinion, that, uh, is one of the few out there that provides some guidance on special projects accounts. Um, it's talking about the special projects account, or the statute. It says, "The statute simply describes special projects as items that would benefit the court's efficient operation. Moreover, since the General Assembly has referred to the monies generated under the statute as additional funds, it appears that the General Sen- Assembly intended that such monies would supplement, but not replace the funds otherwise provided for the court through the ordinary funding mechanisms." That opinion goes on to say that, um, the fees generated pursuant to the statute may not be used to replace monies and services otherwise provided by statute for the operation of the Court of Common Pleas. Rather, such monies are to provide additional funds to the Court of Common Pleas for special operations. In one of my earlier slides, you might have noticed that, uh, from two thousand and eight, we, in our special projects accounts, we provided for the sheriff's department, the clerk's office, in addition to the mediation and foreclosure department. In two thousand and nine, a new opinion came out from the Attorney General's office. That opinion further constrained the same of the language in this. And in fact, we actually got another opinion from our local prosecutor's office to see what we could do. And ultimately, it was their conclusion that we were no longer able to provide funds for the sheriff's office out of our special projects accounts. It was deemed that those were too, that there was not a close enough nexus. Even though the sheriff provides a lot of services under foreclosure, um, we couldn't make that stretch, okay? And so, as a result, we are legally constrained in what we can do with our special projects accounts. So, that's kind of the background of where we're going. Um, in response to one of the, to Commissioner Williams' questions last week, what I wanted to do is I contacted some of my peers throughout the, uh, state, um, and I was only able to get four of them to get back to me in the time for this presentation. Uh, but what you see there is a breakdown of some of the special projects fees, at least in some other counties. Um, Stark County you can see is four fifteen, Lorain County is four-ten, we're obviously significantly higher than both Mahoning and Butler. Um, one of the things that, uh, the, uh, the information up here kinda shows you is, oops, is how those fees have increased over time. I mean, in, in January of two thousand and eight, that's when we first created our foreclosure special projects fee. Um, January of two thousand and nine, our general, the, the fee that we were assessing for general special projects was twenty-five. Within six months, July of two thousand and nine, that went from twenty-five to a hundred and twenty-five dollars. Pretty big jump in a six-month period. Um, you'll also see that our mediation fee went from fifty to ten. That actually is a great example of how we are limited with our special projects accounts. You would say, why would you, in this economic, uh, downturn, decrease a fee that you were previously getting? Quite simply, we had money in the account, we couldn't spend it. Uh, we were generating funds in our, in our mediation special projects that were far in excess of what was necessary to fund that department. And so, as a result, we had to decrease that funding, so it went from fifty dollars to ten. I will tell you that ten dollars is not sufficient to provide for that, that department. So, once we de- uh, decreased that surplus, we will readjust that, and then we will actually be higher than Stark County once again. So, that's kind of the, uh, special projects. They are, um, they provide a, a salve, so to speak, on the pain that we're all experiencing, but by no means are they a panacea. They don't solve our problem. We cannot legally use them, um, for purposes that would be a normal general fund obligation. Uh, we have been very creative in our use of these funds. We, we, we had a discussion with Mr. Williams, um, a couple of weeks ago about the ramifications that if we would become too overreaching with these. If it is determined that a use that we provide for special projects accounts is impermissible, that then would become an obligation of the general fund. So, let's say that in the last two to three years, we spent hundreds and thousands of dollars out of our special projects fund for a purpose that somebody, another court determines is impermissible. That is an obligation of the general fund. The general fund will have to pay that money back. Can you imagine having to pay back a couple of million dollars now? You can't. And so, it's, we have to be, um, legally permissible in how we use these funds. If you have ideas, by all means, it'd probably be something we haven't already considered, but we do whatever we can with these funds, and, um, these funds aren't a slush fund for the court. We also are accountable for these funds. These are in our line item budgets. These are things that we're audited on, and these are things that we're more than happy to, uh, provide the public, um, any kind of redress if there's any concerns. Commissioner, does that answer...
The bank pays for the foreclosure fees, but the general and mediation, is that paid by the public?
Uh, say that again, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
The, um, foreclosure fees paid by the lending institutions, and then, uh, general and mediation paid by the public?
No, they're not. Um, and that was something the judges struggled with when we imposed that fee. What happens is, the bank comes in and, and pays the deposit, okay? That again is not what the fees are in the case, that's just a deposit for the case. At the end of the day, almost in ninety percent of foreclosure cases, the defendant, poor homeowner, has to pay that fee. So, and those are individuals that are at least able to do it. So, and those are individuals that are at least able to do it. Um, you know, they're, they're underwater as it is on their house and now at the end of the day, um, in addition to coming up with the arrears that they already were, probably multiple years, not only that, their taxes, they now have a huge fee that they have to pay because the bank is not gonna eat that. So by all-
But if they don't get the house back in the foreclosure case and the bank gets the house, the bank ultimately ends up with that responsibility?
Nope, that's a judgment, that's against the defendant and unless they declare bankruptcy, they've now lost their house and they have a huge judgment against them that includes whatever the deficiency that the banks sells that house for, as well as the court costs. So by all means, no, those are, those are fees that are borne by ordinary citizens, not the big fat cat banks. Commissioner Williams, does that answer your questions on special projects fees or do you have any more?
No, well, you explained it, uh, pretty well. Couple of weeks ago, I just wanted to bring it up so the general public could hear it.
Thank you. Um, you know, I touched on some of these, but I think these are issues that the general public needs to understand. By all means, we need to be accountable, responsible, demonstrate that we are being efficient, um, a- and hopefully we're doing that here today. Um, and we, we, you can't just cut to cut. There has to be a, a nexus between those two. Um, but there is a, a negative impact as a result of some of the funding cuts that we've already made and some of the funding cuts that are gonna probably occur continuing into the future. Uh, reeng- re-engineering is something that I believe very strongly in, but ultimately, it becomes unattainable without resources to redirect processes and move forward. And I think we have, we have reached that point where we don't have money to go back and make some fixes. Um, I already touched on the jury commissioners not being available. Uh, some of the other things that we've done, we've eliminated maintenance agreements on our typewriters and shredders. Uh, that recently has come back to bite us in the butt. Um, we had a shredder that broke down, it cost us a couple hundred dollars to fix. Uh, but as we were assessing things, we weren't making, uh, we typically in the past, we're not having repairs that were done, those, those, uh, typewriters and, and shredders are very expensive to maintain and have those contracts, so we kinda made a judgment call and said, "We're gonna save some money here" and it has a ramification. Uh, mental health and drug court. Um, there is, similar to the data that deals with the criminal justice system that talks about recidivism and effective treating people, there's a lot of data that talks about mental health court and drug courts. And there's actually a, a very recent data that's also talking about veterans courts. And that's actually something that Judge Zaleski is going to talk to the Veterans Administration today on. Oh, yes, okay. Um, one of the things we, a number of the judges have been very passionate about for uh, some years now, have been getting a mental health court and a drug court. Uh, not with expectations that there is a, uh, increase in general fund expenditures. Uh, we would've anticipated using our special projects accounts for those, but because those accounts are fairly tapped out right now, we're not able to do that. And as a result, what happens is individuals that would, uh, do very well with the, um, intense scrutiny and the, uh, heightened resources that come to play in a mental health court and a drug court, those individuals go through the normal system. As a result, those individuals are more likely to offend. As a result, they're more likely to impact us locally in our economy. And that's something that, it, it's very unfortunate that we've not been able to bring to place because of economic conditions. Um, this is something that, that, that's near and dear to the commissioner's heart. We touched on it earlier with the PSI people. We have now more and more people that are compensated out of the fu- uh, funding sources with, for, that have no provisions for retirement or leave payouts. Um, almost our entire probation staff is either grant funded or PSI funded. Uh, we just brought in six new people, uh, didn't have a choice, had to do it, that have no provisions for when they retire. Uh, ultimately, that probably is gonna fall on the general fund.
Well, it doesn't, doesn't have to, you hire them with terms and conditions that don't give them those provisions.
I, I think we would have significant labor unrest.
I don't know if you're gonna have significant labor unrest if somebody accepts it before they're hired. The, this has been an ongoing problem with grants and special programs, uh, for decades. The, the grant ends and we end up with all these trailing costs that get tapped onto the general fund. I think before we enter into those grant relationships or hire those people, it needs to be clear that they're paid from the grant and should funds be available, then they, they can get those benefits should they not be available. I don't think it should be a burden on the general fund or we shouldn't do it.
I, I don't disagree in concept with you Jim, but the reality is I have to bring in a qualified employee. I don't have a choice in, in requiring an individual to do a service. I have to provide PSI riders. We've already talked about that.
I, I, I understand that, I'm not challenging you have to provide them. What I'm, what I'm suggesting is, is that these are the hidden costs to the general fund that weigh us down all the time.
No, just great.
You, me, we're the same.
Yep.
I, I understand that. But the, they don't have to be provided those benefits.
I, I don't know how I'm gonna bring in qualified individuals if I don't provide them benefits. It, it can't happen. I mean, if you wanna engage in those negotiations on my behalf, maybe you're a better negotiator.
I certainly am prepared to do that for you.
Uh, thank you.
Any, any other help I can provide?
On a basis?
I'm sorry?
Can those employees be hired, not as employees, but contractors?
Um, we actually were constrained. We looked at and we brought these six new, new people in, we were very worried because we felt that they were gonna fall within the, um, classified service, which constrains us what we're able to do.
I, and, and I understand that. The, I, I fully understand that, but we've been mixing up our employment mix here with regards to how we bring people in and staff them. I know you have too.
Yep.
I'm only suggesting, I believe it's a misnomer to state that they have to get those benefits if they're provided for in grant or supplemental funding. They can be another class of employee. As far as recruiting qualified people, we're all struggling with that.
Yeah.
Contrary to popular belief, uh, the amount of, the employment situation mustn't be as bad as people think because we are struggling with the pay and structure that we have to gain, uh, the best applicants. I, I realize that. I didn't, I didn't say that you shouldn't do it, all I'm suggesting is you don't have to do it.
I, I wouldn't disagree, conceptually. Or actually, yeah, the judges talk, we're not talking about the actual healthcare benefits, we're talking about retirement benefits.
When, when they separate payoff of vacation, sick leave and so forth. Now, they are classified, there's a few things under the code that we have to pay out, specifically the vacation, but we're, we're able to control the roll-up on vacation, we're able to, uh, control the, the, the roll-up, uh, with respect to sick time because we reduced that policy, so that has significantly reduced our, our burden there. Also, I, I noticed that lots of departments in, in the county like to adopt policies that are similar to commission, to the commissioners when they provide a somewhat, they think a generous benefit, but when it doesn't, they adopt more generous policies when we restrict dollars. The two hundred, right now it's down to two hundred and fifty hours, but the code doesn't require that.
We've mirrored the commissioners in that respect.
Right, but the code doesn't require that. Again, we have, you mirror that in that respect because it's a benefit, but you, you know, you don't mirror other policies and I really wasn't gonna wanna debate that.
Okay.
Okay, so what I just said, I'll repeat. Some departments adopt policies that appear to be in their best interest, but when they're not in their best interest, they don't adopt those policies. Uh, and they adopt, adopt more generous policies and I'm, you know, so I, rather than get into that debate, but you could adopt, very easy to adopt a policy where those people don't get any sick leave payout when they leave. It's not required by the code.
That, that is a feasible, uh, theoretical feasible concept, I would agree with you conceptually.
Okay, so, you know, I'm, there's ways of dealing with these, these funding sources that don't allow us to have trailing costs to. And the biggest one that's a problem for us and I, and I'm, haven't been able to completely deal with it is unemployment cost. When, when a program shuts down and we pick up the unemployment and that doesn't even come out of your budget, that comes over here and comes out of a global budget.
I actually had, well, I had a number of employees that were not, uh, general fund employees that we had to pay, um, uh, over a hundred thousand dollars, uh, on because of unemployment, so yeah, I do bear your name.
So your program was probably still ongoing then?
It was a, it was a special project for unemployed.
Yeah, we're, we're kinda lucky in some respects.
You absolutely are.
It doesn't happen all the time, but we've had grants end and it's been no cause by the courts or anybody else. The funding has just come to an end. Next thing, we're picking up unemployment costs for, you know, a number of, uh, uh, months and lately, years. And, and that, that puts a burden on to us also. The, the federal statutes though on most of that don't allow us to take funds and set them aside for that potentiality. Uh, they just simply don't allow us to do that.
Now, you're saying that the, the two hundred and fifty hours sick time, I know what statute is, but two forty I thought, or two thirty-five, but for, um, employment through grants, we don't have to pay that?
It's, it's a locally adopted policy and it, each, each-
The two thirty or just?
For, for anything. The only thing the Ohio Revised Code requires is retirement payout upon vacation and for unused sick time. And it doesn't even allow for the complete roll-up of sick time if it doesn't wanna be approved by the, by the office that's, that's making that decision, the appointing authority's making that decision.
So we could actually reduce the sick time now to under two hundred and thirty hours?
You, you can reduce that payout down to, to zero. The only thing the code requires is fifty percent of nine hundred and sixty hours upon retirement. Uh, the, the thing you, what we were told we couldn't do is that something that was given already cannot be reduced. You would need a new policy beginning forward.
There's only going forward with any hires after that fact.
But, well, we could actually freeze the individuals who haven't reached those hours.
I think that we were told that that would probably survive a test, yes.
All right, so we can freeze the, we can reduce the number of hours and freeze employees who haven't reached those hours, that number today, is that correct?
I believe that's what counsel advised.
That's correct, if, you know, the, the, on the sick time, the minimum, statutory minimum is thirty days, so that comes out to about two hundred and eighty and that's, that's upon retirement.
Not quit or laid off, retirement?
Retirement is defined as how?
Retirement is retirement.
Retirement allows-
What I'm asking is there's so many years that you have to have?
Well, it varies.
Do you consider a retirement?
It, it, it varies. The, the, the retirement's understood that you are eligible for payment from P E R S. Okay? And that, that varies, it could be twenty-five and fifty, five thirty and out, it can be sixty and five, uh, so it has various elements. So there's no really clear answer to one retirement because, other than to say that they're going to receive, um, a benefit from P E R S.
Okay. And if we make the, you're saying if we went through it, the board actually made a resolution to change that, the, um, mirror the state and, um, freeze anyone who is currently at two forty, because right now we go up to a thousand hours for anyone employed prior to two thousand and five.
To, to the point that people have already accrued that, we'd have to allow them to continue to, say, say some-
That was the all-
Say somebody had four hundred, we could say, all right, we're gonna freeze you at four hundred.
Right. And would that take effect for the entire county or just for the commissioners?
The, again, some of those policies can be adopted differently by appointing officials.
Yeah, I'd, uh, that one I can't answer off the top of my head.
So, uh, other elected officials could have different policies on that?
I think the sick is, um, for over half, they're covered by more than half the general fund and, uh, understanding, you get collective bargaining and then-
Right.
But over half the general fund is covered by the commissioners. It, it's a combination of the commissioners and individual departments, they can't vary it without permission of the commissioners. If, if they're over half general fund.
Okay.
Can you bring us some stuff on that next week, jury's arena will be covered?
Again, and I'm not debating, I know Tim's been stretching the buck until Georgia's screaming, screaming over there, I'm not challenging that whatsoever. It's just that we're, we have lots of grants in different departments here and I think that we need to really take a look at how we employ under those grants, uh, with regard to continued availability of funding of those, those employees. Uh, and it may be that a structural difference needs to exist. We're doing that in a lot of the places that we hire and where, where, when, when mixing up our employment or our capital resources quite a bit to decrease our cost.
I mean, we could have people that come from a different municipality or a school board or something and come over into one of these programs and carry their sick and vacation time also?
Yeah, that's all stat, that's all statutory, you can't change that.
Right, yeah, I know.
Absolutely, you don't have a choice.
The fi- the cities have home rule, they don't have to accept, accept it, but the county is required to accept it.
Yep.
But they're, even if it was a program type of employee, we can't do anything about that?
We would have to accept it, but the policy on-
If we have a certain policy to prohibit that?
No.
No.
The, the policy on cash out i- i- is part of a local decision and that was reduced down to the two hundred and fifty hours after five years of county employment.
Which we changed when we got here.
Well, it was changed to two fifty after five, five years of county employment. It, it can be upon retirement. The, my, my understanding of our strategy when we made that change was that in our next round of positioning, uh, with labor changes, we were going to try to decrease that to the minimum statutory requirement because right now, that's contained in twenty labor contracts.
So if we made a change, it wouldn't, it wouldn't affect the bargaining units?
Not at this point, no.
Okay.
Yeah, ultimately, uh, my point in this was to bring up and, and to make the commissioners and, and more importantly, the public aware, uh, that, something that Jim knows very well, that there are lots of hidden costs out there that potentially could inure to the general fund.
Right.
Um, and, you know, we can agree to debate, you know, what the, uh, the best course of action as far as hiring employees and that kinda stuff and respectfully, you know, the judges are a separate branch of government. They're gonna make a determination as to, from an accountability standpoint, an efficiency standpoint and an effectiveness standpoint, what they in their minds believe is the best way to run the court. And my job is to stand up here and tell you about it and if you disagree, we should have a discussion about that. Um, but as our budget stands-
I just think it brought up a good point though, you talking about that and what they're not covering.
Absolutely.
Regards that the general fund is going into picking up another backdoor unfunded mandate that ends up in our lumps that are not-
You know, we, we continue, we don't just lay, roll over when the state says, "Take this." I mean, we will continue to push back against them. I mean, every year, uh, our chief probation officer writes a number of grants and he tries to nickel and dime and get, get those benefits in there when he can. And we've had people that have actually, we've, we've had people that have retired out of those funds in the last year or two, um, or have been laid off. And those have not, the general fund hasn't borne those because we've been able to go to our, um, probation services fees, that kinda stuff. But as those accounts and our special projects account continue to get utilized to a greater degree, that, uh, flexibility dissipates. So, um, talked about employees, uh, vehicles and facility conditions. Um, just yesterday, I got a call from, uh, Bart about a vehicle. He's got a bill for sixteen hundred dollars and he says to me, "What do we do?" And I said, "You know what, I'm going to talk to the commissioners tomorrow, I'll put that on my agenda." Um, you know, we have an aging fleet. Uh, these vehicles are used in pursuant of the employees' duties and obligations. They have to go out in the field, they have to make arrests, they have to put these people, as Doug Messer said, in a, a contained vehicle where they can't cause damage either to themselves or to the officer. Um, we get the casts off from the sheriff's office, take them happily, but they cost money to maintain and we have a sixteen hundred dollar bill now that has to be, to make that vehicle serviceable. Um, you know, I, we had a brief conversation with Commissioner Williams and he said, "Well, maybe there's some availability with our existing fleet." Again, there's still costs of taking that vehicle and outfitting it and putting a cage in it, but, uh, these are costs that the public needs to be aware are ongoing, capital expenditures, Commissioner, you've talked to it. We have, because of austerity measures, not been addressing some of the, uh, aginess of our capital issues and that's gonna come back to haunt us. Uh, the probation department itself is housed in the old courthouse. Um, Commissioner Williams saw for himself two weeks ago how deplorable that condition, the conditions over there are. We cannot continue to expect, uh, our employees to work, you know, we don't need a Taj Mahal for them, but they have to be able to do their job. We cannot subject them to conditions of black mold. Uh, there is rodents that are, uh, uh, running rampant over there. We have a lab that performs, uh, studies for the prosecutor's office. Um, if, if those become tainted, we, we're just spending a lot of money to do nothing. And so, again, not asking for a solution here per se, because we actually do, we're working on one, we're meeting, uh, tomorrow with one of your representatives to work on a new, uh, location for those people. But just to make the public aware, there's lots of costs out there that no one ever understands and knows about. Uh, finally, case management system, something that's been near and dear to my heart. Um, it is something that we believe will provide some great savings and efficiencies for, uh, the court system as a whole. Um, we, we need to get those. We spend a, tens of thousands of dollars on consumables every year, uh, tens of thousands of dollars on postage every year. Those are costs that can be reduced, uh, with the use of a new system. That system's going to cost a couple million dollars. It's ultimately not our expectation that we're going to look to the general fund to provide that. Candidly, it would be reasonable for us to do that. That is a reasonable and necessary court function and a court budget. We're doing what we can to defray these costs so that the, the taxpayers of Lorraine County continue to have the, um, enjoy whatever systems of government we're able to provide them. But there is going to be a reckoning. We could only do so much. And I, I think we've come to that time, and, and people need to be aware of that. Uh, commissioners, that's all I have for my presentation. I'm more than happy to take questions either from yourselves or from the public.
Yours went longer than Doug Messer's with a lot shorter PowerPoint.
Hopefully, there's a lot more substance there.
You laugh.
Tim did tell me it was going to take four hours.
I could go longer.
I know.
Board, any questions? Judge Zaleski, would you like to talk to us at all, or? Commissioner Kelsey, Commissioner Williams?
I just looked at, um, the 2011, uh, budget and then the 2012 ask, and it looked like you were $700,000 less. Where am I, what am I missing?
Where we at, Commissioner, which, um?
Um, just I have, from what the budget department had given me yesterday. Oh, that's why it's different, okay.
Yeah, but there is a really, an $84,000 savings that is, that is true numbers that were, uh, less from 2011 than 2012. So, bottom line, we're $84,000 less. We are 3.22% down from our 2011 budget.
I appreciate that, and I appreciate, um, the fact that you are doing what you can to save money. And I, actually, I'm going to ask Mr. Cordez to check out our copy machines to see if we might save some money. I don't know if we have that many, but.
I've been, I've been in them, all kinds of different things with them, and you know, we've eliminated a lot of machines and.
Right, because we don't have as many staff.
And, uh, one of the things I, I did similar to what Tim did, similar but not completely the same, is, uh, some of the leases we have, I don't want them to be long-term leases. I want them to be short-term leases with options to renew, but I want aggressive pricing on them. I talked to the people that are vendors with us and told them that they have to start sharing more of the risk involved with that. It's real easy to lease as a copier when they, they cost it out over a complete five years on their equipment, and it's a bread and butter lease for them, and.
Absolutely.
They, they, there's no risk involved with them at the end of the five years. They already fully paid for the equipment, and service calls are going to be minimum. So, they're going to have to tighten up and assume a lot more of the risk with that equipment if they want to be in a lease agreement.
Now, Jim, there used to be a board, like an IT board, that would, um, take a look at the, the cost for all equipment.
Well, they, they, actually, they, they look at computer equipment, they don't look at.
The data board.
It's a data processor board.
There, there's no, um, uh, equipment, uh, there's not a board that deals with equipment, such as, uh, copy machines and the likes. They deal with computers, basically, data board.
Okay. Talking with the multiple elected officials, it doesn't seem like that board is really meeting.
I don't think in any county that I've talked to my peers that, that the data board is substantially effective or has significant, um, outcome determination. Uh, I think they still do meet occasionally.
Yeah, they're just, they're a statutory animal, and I think Jim is exactly right. They perform the function of meeting when necessary to acquire new equipment, and there isn't really a good check and balance on it. Um, I don't think it's ultimately serves the purpose to which it was designed. And I don't think Lorraine County's different than most counties.
And, and, and the, the regulations are kind of antiquated. They, they speak to, uh, a, a, a technology that, you know, was very kind of primitive. Uh, it's still old-school thinking about big mainframe computers and, uh, things like that. Uh, it's not as flexible and speedy as, um, the equipment is in this day and age.
Just curious, uh, who's the contract that you're working with?
Actually, I just talked to some of the vendors that were. There, the, uh, there's not any particular contract right now because we, we have a couple that will be coming up in the future, but renewal.
What contract service did you go with, Tim?
Uh, I went through multiple. Uh, we, primarily in the past was MT Business, and they had, uh, the county locked up, and I started talking to Xerox, and I started talking to Blue Technology. And, um, I made it abundantly clear that there is no sacred cows, and I don't care what your past business relationship was, it's the bottom line. And now, with that, I want some assurances, and I got them.
Yeah, they, they need to tighten down because they were, they were selling these fully funded five-year leases. And they were, they were golden.
Yeah, and, and we still do business with MT. I just get better deals.
My concern is, do we have, um, individuals going over, giving you a nice sweetheart deal, knowing that they could come over to a different department?
Absolutely.
Who's not aggressive?
Uh, not as much anymore because I call, uh, I go down to the domestic relations court, and I say, "Hey, I just got .008% or .008 on copies. What are you doing?"
What, is that going over to Job and Family Services as well?
Probably not, no. Uh, I just talk to the people that I deal with on a regular basis.
Job and Family Services is under a bit of a different requirement when they do equipment leases and purchase like that, uh, through their state competitive requirements. So, they, I, I don't, I don't know if they're, do you do sealed? No, they're not here.
They're not here.
Um, they, uh.
I think we normally award bids to that contract, only by resolution.
They usually have to bid this, where we can negotiate ours.
Right. Under an RFP, we can negotiate ours, where theirs normally is a bid that we award.
Right, they're, they're under a tighter, uh, requirement with regards to the interpretation of competitive purchasing. So, theirs is usually a sealed bid, uh, proposal for a certain amount of equipment, rather than a negotiated amount, which is something that Tim and I do with some of the companies.
Well, commissioners, thank you, it was a pleasure.
Can you stick around one minute? We'll see if Shirley has any questions, Tim?
Absolutely.
Shirley, Shirley R. Johnson Overland. As a member of, uh, as a representative of an organization, has always been concerned about the Constitution, justice, freedom, and the rights of individuals. I have been very pleased to hear the discussions that we've had. I, I didn't hear last week's by Doug Messer, but I got a copy of his report. Excuse me a minute. I think it's very important, it's been pointed out in some places, but not in all places, that when we look at cutting any of these services, we, we, those are the big philosophies, the big ideas that we have to look at, whether we are really doing things that are harmful to citizens of our country, whether they understand it or appreciate it or realize it. I want to say one other thing, what was it? And I think that, I mean that in relation to cutting benefits, cutting workers' rights and, and so on, which we know is a big movement across the country now. But I think when it comes up, we need to discuss it very openly and very carefully and be sure people understand what we are doing. I heard a report, uh, this morning on CNN about what has happened to teachers and why they're leaving their profession. And they have a 46% turnover after five years, partly because of some of these things that are going on now.
The, the, Tim raised a very, uh, serious issue and very, uh, adequately did so. There's plenty of employees out there. It's getting the talent you need to perform the job. So, when people say, "Well, this person, that person," yeah, that we can get employees. We can always get employees. But getting people to provide a, a good, solid job to the public, uh, sometimes is, is challenging with the restrictions that we're in. Uh, so, it, it gets a little bit difficult when, when we're being judged basically on, on a wage line, rather than on a, what the job entails, what the qualifications for the job will need to be. And you, and you go right down the road, and yes, there's plenty of people that want that job. Are there plenty of people that are going to do the job and do it well for the taxpayers? The answer is, you know, there's some, not, not everybody. And we've been challenged to keep, not only attract, but to keep talent and jobs.
Got a great example. Uh, we just hired those six people from the PSI department. We had, uh, 400 applications for those six positions. One of the people we were considering, it was a, uh, a selected candidate, tested positive for drugs. So, absolutely, we get lots of applications for, for limited positions. And we do struggle to select quality candidates that are going to do a good job. And, and that's our obligation.
And we, we've come to the conclusion in some areas, um, even up in our economic development department, we get a couple fire breathers for a few years and you use their talent, but they usually move on. We cannot create opportunities where we keep them very long, but we try to exploit what we can while they're with us. Uh, and then we have to start all over again. Is there really a good return to the taxpayers when you're cycling employees through jobs when you got to spend, you know, a year or two in a learning curve with them, and then they leave in year three, when they become most valuable to you?
I would say, you know what? Use the privacy industry standard. They would tell you no. Private industry said, "You, you get a good quality employee, you invest in them, and you reap the returns of that." If you're constantly cycling through employees and retraining them, you're actually losing effectiveness.
Well, that's, that's one of my points, is that those things have to be stated out in the open and, and they have, it has to be made clear to the citizenry what's happening. I mean, it's all very well to say we, we can get plenty of people to hire. Um, I guess, I'll be, I'll be long gone, but, I mean, I'll be short gone maybe before, uh, employees pretty soon find out again that they have to start all over with unions and fighting for their benefits and striking and so on because we're getting rid of so many of them now. I don't want to belabor this or argue with these, but I'm glad it's being, I hope it's being consid- all those things are being considered when we think it's so easy to make cuts.
Thank you, Shirley. Anyone else listening to this, or the board, or the court attorney, please? Thank you very much.
Once again, thank you, commissioners.
Second?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.